Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, April 11th. Again, this is a hybrid meeting. Some members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely. In person, we are at the community room in the Norton Public Library. And if you wish to join the meeting online via video, if you have not already done so, there is a link available on the meeting agenda where you can use the Zoom app with meeting ID 6389291060. There is also a dial-in number available should you choose to join the meeting via phone only. Meeting will also be available on Norton Cable Access. And there we go. If you are not able to attend future sessions and you would like to submit email questions or comments for the board ahead of the meeting, you please send them to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, whose email address is listed on the agenda as well as on the Town of Norton's website. So with that out of the way, I'm gonna call the meeting to order here. In terms of Planning Board Business and Policies, I don't think we have anything to address at this point. We do have a few bills and warrants which I'll pass around. The first of which is a peer review account from the Pear Corporation, which is related to the Life Science Overlay District, which we're gonna be discussing later. And then we have a Sun Chronicle posting as well. So I'll pass those around. And I guess this should have been actually under Planning Board Business and Policies, but just a note, I'll pass this around as well. For our decision on SP 17104, which was for Zero King Philip Road, the decision referenced an incorrect owner, so we are filing a quick change to that decision with the town clerk. If you would like to read that over, please feel free. So we did have two sets of minutes which Brian had sent around. I know there was one adjustment to the minutes where the initial introduction said the Zoom meeting was down, but that's been corrected. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns related to the minutes of either August 30th or September 27th? Otherwise, I look for a motion to approve those, one at a time, please.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 30th, 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Laura, for the motion. I'm waiting for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. With Alan remote, I'm just gonna go through and do a roll call vote here. So I'll start with Jim.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Obsteem.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Thank you.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 27th, 2022.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Laura and Wayne, once again. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve those minutes? Okay. Let's do this one more time. Jim, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Obsteem.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Perfect. Moving right along here, we do have a continuation of the public hearing for our upcoming town meeting warrant on the agenda. Does anybody have any objection to be putting that at the end of the discussions and we can work through some of the A and Rs and public hearings that we have?
No. No problem.
I think we'll be able to move through this fairly quickly, but I wanna just prioritize here. Okay. So the next four items on our agenda are just a review of findings and conditions and execution of decision for four of our recent projects. We have Zero West Main Street, we have Four Mansfield Avenue, we have Zero South Washington. So start with the first one for Zero West Main Street. Has everybody had a chance to review the decision? And did we have any questions or comments or conditions that we felt they needed to be captured better? I mean, I think these are largely standard conditions, so if we already issued, we already made a vote on the decision, so if we don't say anything, we can just move on to the next agenda item. Okay. Related to the decision for Four Mansfield Avenue for the Library Square Project, again, we have the draft decision. Is there anything in there that we wanted to address? But this one specifically, I don't think, did we, did we need to spell out a waiver for parking, or is that just kind of?
No, it wasn't necessary. It was demonstrated that they met the criteria through their parking analysis. And I believe zoning had already granted a waiver, even though technically the planning board's place to do it, but...
Well, I mean, they were short on the requirement. They just couldn't do anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Unless anybody has any objection, I'll move on to the third one here, which is Zero South Washington. This one does not have any conditions because it is a denial. Does anybody have any questions or comments related to this one? And just for this one to know, I'll call out the specific findings on page two, which are not terribly, they're not, it's not overly specific, but basically the finding was that the planning board has discretion to issue special permit for uses, there we go, allowed in the zoning district, they're not granted as a matter of right, and then be that the project would not be socially or economically desirable. So again, this would be filed with the town clerk unless we have any edits, amendments, Okay. Nothing else? Okay. Next item on the agenda is, actually, is that the one I already covered, Brian? The Zero King Philip Road?
Yeah, that was the one.
Okay. So apparently I took that one out of order. I apologize.
And I wasn't sure how to put it in, so it's there.
That's okay. We took care of it anyway. So that's all set. We've reviewed all of those decisions. And Laura?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So for that, Four Mansfield Avenue, I didn't think that a planning waiver was maybe necessary because the zoning board had issued a waiver for them, but in any other case except this one, zoning board would take care of this. But because this is in this very specific district, it needs to be for planning. So if you'd like to cover all our bases, we can add language to it. Same planning board also waived their requirements, just to make sure we're...
Related to the parking, you mean?
Yeah. But they did have a parking site that provided that they can share parking spaces from like the commons. That's why the commons was rearranged and they have another parking lot on the same side. So they did provide documentation to support it. I don't know how the planning board wants to address it, if you wanna make a note of the waiver, or just one is not necessary because they proved that they met their requirements.
I'll defer to the board on that if they have any feeling. I don't necessarily feel it's necessary. I think the village commercial, village center core parking requirement is they have to show that they would meet the requirements either on-site or with shared spaces. So we're not necessarily digging into the nitty-gritty of all those shared spaces or off-site lots, so... But I don't think it's necessary. If anybody else feels like we wanna add language to that, let me know.
I'm fine with the way it is.
Thank you.
With those out of the way, next thing up here is we have an A and R endorsement for Zero Taunton Avenue. I know I saw the engineer here. So pop up here. I guess we don't have the podium there for you, but that looks probably...
It's good.
It's over here.
Out. I don't need it if you don't, it's up there.
We may want it later, so...
Anybody wants a larger copy or what you're looking at is fine.
We've got it up on the screen for you, on first as well.
Yeah, so it's Zero Taunton Avenue, Craig Sigonowski Rim Engineering, also the owner, David Bignail is in the audience. Thank you. Zero Taunton Avenue is about 600 feet north of Faithway on Route 140. Right now, it's a vacant piece of land, 22.7 acres total. So we're just looking to break out a small lot in the front that meets the commercial zone, 120 feet of frontage, 18,000 square feet of land, contiguous upland. And we show the 31711 square feet of contiguous upland. The welllands were flagged years ago, about three or four years ago, have not been confirmed, but we are showing close to twice the minimum square footage. And then the remaining land, we're leaving, we have two places of frontage, 192 on one side and 110 on the other. So five times the area lot with 50 feet of minimum frontage. We show 8.76 acres of contiguous upland in the rear, so...
Okay. I know you said you got the, had discussions with Maria in terms of the delineations and the approximation of the areas. So just from Maria, from your perspective, the risk by not having all those defined and confirmed is that if Lot 2 is not buildable and it needs to be buildable, then the applicant will be back here again for another A and R.
If that's the way they have, they could cross wetlands. That's very hard to do through a conservation commission, but that is a danger that you, we cannot deny an A and R based on wetlands, but these lots may or may not be buildable, but that's not regulated by an A and R. It's just as a heads up. So it's better to have them confirmed or have the plan, the wetlands be delayed in the past two years, but it's not a, you know, condition of denial or anything. It's just something to know.
So if you're comfortable, then that's, that's what we're asking, so...
Yeah, we're comfortable with it.
Brian, do you wanna just scroll down there just a hair to see the frontage there? There we go. Perfect. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant here? Again, with an A and R, we're just changing the lot lines. We're not saying that a lot is buildable, just adjusting the lot lines and ensuring there's adequate access. Anybody has any questions? I look for a motion to endorse the A and R.
I'm going to endorse A and R 1893.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay. I'll go through the roll one more time. Well, maybe more times. Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
And Brian, are those the copies that we need to sign later?
Yep, this is from my...
Okay. So let's not leave before we sign. Let's get that at the end. Okay. In the public hearing section of our agenda, we have two listed here. The first one, 43 Charlotte Avenue, is a continuation from February the 28th. The applicant is seeking another continuance to our April 25th meeting to allow for more time for their architects, et cetera, to come up with costing for her. Any objections to the continuance?
Motion to continue Special Permit 17942 until April 25th, 2023.
Second.
Okay. Now we'll give it a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next public hearing open on our agenda is SPR 18654. That is 233 West Main Street. The applicant is Level Design Group. I think I saw somebody come in here with that shirt on. So I will let you come to the podium and just give an overview of the project. I know that town staff did have some comments for you, so we'll hear the beginning and then we'll talk about anything open and...
Sure.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Daniel Campbell, Level Design Group, on behalf of the applicant. What we have is a parcel in the corner. In this location, it's a existing, can I go one page further? It's an existing three-family house with a fruit stand at the front. We have gravel parking along Oak, and we have gravel parking and grass along West Main Street as well. The proposal is to demolish the existing two structures, one more pitch, to demolish the existing two structures, I'm sorry, two more pitches, and construct a four-family house instead of a three-family house. We evaluated the drainage using three points of evaluation, the first point being Oak Street, second point being West Main, the third point being our western property boundary. The northern property boundary grades to the west, so we use that as our delineation. The overall drainage on the site decreases on the east and west to approximately zero through all the storm events. West Main Street goes down by 50% or greater through every storm event as well. We prepared a traffic analysis on the site, and the traffic analysis shows an approximate increase in traffic of six average daily trips throughout the site. AM peak is .31 on average, PM peak is .6 on average. So the modification to the overall traffic is minor as well. We did take notes at the zoning board hearing asking us about traffic, specifically the direction of the driveway travel. Originally, our intention was to get people further off of West Main Street, turning into the left, coming back around and coming out, out to the front. They, some neighbors, as well as the zoning board, asked us to reverse that pattern, bringing people out further away to not congest the intersection.
So they're going into the driveway right at West Main? Correct. Did you wanna share that back there?
Sure.
The plan for, so the plan is for drivers to enter the driveway as close to West Main as feasible, and then they'd come back out further up on Oak?
Correct. I still think that's what we ended up with. I apologize. We ended up reversing it the other direction. We started up top.
Okay. I was gonna say, that seems, yeah.
So that any congestion caused by the development would be on-site. I apologize. We did ask for a waiver on the landscaping requirement, though we can clearly meet the requirement in both sections, and we do meet the requirement along Oak Street, though I can provide the calculation. The entire front yard along West Main Street is being converted from gravel to grass. We can plant the 10% if the waiver's not granted, so we can provide that as well. History, and I know that that staff has put this in the report, we applied to zoning first. We applied to zoning first because we felt that that was, that was the way to go. And we felt that way because if ultimately this board approves it and zoning doesn't wanna grant us the special permit or the variance for a pre-existing use on an undersized lot, then technically the board's decision means nothing. So we did apply to zoning first. They were vehement about us coming to planning first, so we are here. We did do the extra work, made the application, drainage, traffic, and we're coming here and happy to hear any comments.
Yeah. Applicants have gone multiple, with, to multiple boards, either concurrently or in sequence in any number of different ways. And I agree, it might, I think, the minute we come up with a guideline, there'll probably be a good reason to go the other way on the guideline. But yeah. Maria, I know you had some comments in your memo of the landscape they mentioned in terms of the lighting plan. Did you have any comments or questions about that? I know the, you mentioned that the parking is intended to be within the structure.
Correct. So we have parking within the structure with the exception of two spaces. We have the driveway. We don't intend to light this in anything but a residential manner. So we'll have residential door lights, residential garage lights. There will be no light poles. It will not be 12-foot street lamps or anything of the sort. So the guidelines, we are perfectly amenable to working within them.
I can't say I'll miss the fruit stand.
That is what I understand.
Okay. Any members of the board have questions regarding the project? Yes?
I would prefer to keep the landscaping requirement as is, and that's why when you say it's gonna be grass as compared to just, would you guys leave it gravel there if a waiver was granted, or what would you do there?
No, we intend to have it as grass.
Right.
The waiver is because it asks specifically for a landscape plan. The requirements in your bylaw are to plant so many trees over a certain amount of area. The reason we've asked for the waiver is site distance. The fruit stand blocks your site distance today coming out of Oak Street. If we plant in some portion of the front yard, say in the portion closest to West Main Street, we're defeating the purpose of that construction. If we plant further back, we're realistically not blocking as much of the building from West Main Street, so we've asked for the waiver. If it's not granted, we'll provide you a landscape plan and provide, I think it's, it's four trees along the one side. Along Oak Street, we have a bioretention basin which counts as the planting. We don't have trees. Happy to plant a few along Oak as well.
So just to clarify, you're asking for a waiver from the planting requirement, the landscape plan requirement, or both?
Theoretically both, because we're not, we haven't supplied to date a landscape plan.
Is that solely in an effort to save costs so that you can go back to ZVA?
As I said, so landscape plan in general, the applicant would prefer to, to keep it as grass. So the landscaping has been incorporated in our plans as grass, but it is not a strict landscape plan prepared by a landscape architect as required. If we're requesting, or if the board feels that they would not like to waive that in this case, we will come back next time with the landscaping plan as appropriate. Again, it's, I think it's four trees. It should be a pretty simplistic landscape plan.
And the shrubs?
Right. There are, there are some inside of the bioretention basin, but again, the overall area that's encompassed is, is pretty minor.
I think we have a few other questions.
Jim, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Why, is there no special permit application for this plan?
Special permit for the site plan as a whole.
Don't they need a special permit in addition to the site plan review?
Well, technically, they're already multi-family, because Homer's farm was a three-family.
Okay.
And so this would be going to a four.
All right, so there's no special permit to...
Since it's already pre-existing.
Got it. Okay.
There's no pre-existing non-conforming lots in Norton.
True. So I've got some questions about the use of the space in general.
Sure.
I am intimate, I've passed by this twice a day. I'm intimately familiar with this lot. Happy to see something going on here, but I'm, I'm sort of questioning the use of the space. So I've got concerns about, you've got four three-bedroom units and exactly two guest parking spaces, which seems really inadequate. And there doesn't seem to be a lot of space for guests to park even in front of the garage, especially the closer you get to West Main Street. So I'm wondering why it has been, why aren't you making better use of all of the space that's there? The old property was 71 feet from the road, West Main Street.
Sure.
You're proposing taking it 30 feet closer and leaving 80 feet of space to the north with absolutely nothing in it. In looking at the way the parcel is oriented, it would seem to be, it would seem to make more sense to also orient the structures in the same way so that each unit is equidistant from Oak Street, and you're not utilizing the empty space to the north.
Sure. I will try and answer them in order.
Okay.
So first question having to do with parking. We have two designated visitor parking spaces because it's a requirement in the town. However, in front of each garage, there is 18 foot of depth in front of the garages. I cannot call them visitor parking spaces, and that's because the bylaw requires us to have visitor parking spaces 20 feet away from the building itself. So though a visitor may park for any individual unit directly in front of the garage, I'm coming to visit you, you live there, I'm probably parking in front of your garage. They are not officially visitor spaces. So we did try and make good utilization of the space in that respect, making sure that each unit realistically had spaces to park in front of the garage. I can't call them visitor spaces because of the requirements. That's the individual unit driveway. The reason I oriented the site the way I did is a few different aspects. One, we have neighbors towards the rear that are fairly close to the property line, towards the northwest that's fairly close to the property line as well. So we wanted to pull the building forward. The other portion of that is the existing septic system, and all of its iterations are back in that field somewhere. So to put the building back there, to dig out a foundation, we'd potentially be removing all of those other aspects of the septic construction, including any dirt which may be contaminated with seppage and the light in the rear. If we move the building forward, we're purely closing the existing septic system and leaving it as a nice grass lawn in the rear.
Okay. Do we have landscaping requirements for the side yard? Oh, that's a question from Maria?
By the, by the side yard, are you talking about?
To the north, meaning where the septic is.
So we currently have foliage all the way around where the septic is.
Yep.
There's grass areas around that, and then there's foliage along our western property line.
Right.
So we're cutting some of those areas, but we are maintaining where they are.
Okay.
And then on the far northern property line, we have the existing tree stand as well. There's no requirements of the side yard or neighbors unless we're conflicting districts. But again, if there's a request to plant a tree or a shrub, I am sure that the applicant who is here would be happy to, to look into that as well as we prepare a landscape plan if required.
The reason why I'm asking about the orientation of the property itself is, again, traveling by there every single day. I can tell you for a fact, in the morning, coming out of Oak Street, it does get backed up during school hours. We also have a problem with trucks and school buses being able to take the right turn off of West Main onto Oak, so much so that I have sat in a line of traffic that has had to back up to let the school bus get up the road.
Sure.
So I'm concerned with the driveway being so close to the place where it's going to back up. I'd prefer, I think everything, to be a little bit further up and away from West Main Street, to be quite honest.
So.
And I understand.
Yeah.
I understand the rationale you said.
And orientation to Oak Street, one of the reasons that we didn't orient it perpendicular to or parallel with Oak is as you're coming down West Main, then you're looking in the front doors of each one of these structures. Whereas in this orientation, as you're coming down West Main, you're going to see the corner of the building and really the end. So it it does make for a better view. What we're hoping with, as I put in the traffic report, right now cars back up on Oak Street for a few different reasons. Like you said, the turning radiuses are tight to say the least. The existing fruit stand is inside of the right of way at that location. It is only 10 feet back from the West Main Street right away. So each vehicle that pulls up to take a right or a left out of West Main Street has to pull all the way up to the fog lines. They're at the single white line. To do that, now you're, that's the only way you can see in both directions. If you were all the way back at the stop sign, you're sitting facing the fruit stand. So your line of sight is four feet, maybe five. You've pulled forward, your line of sight's interrupted by some of the things that already exist in the area, including some of the foliage that we're planning on taking down. But that line of sight is a few hundred feet. With taking down the fruit stand and changing the tree line having to do with the septic system, we're increasing the line of sight in that direction of West Main to a little over 1,200 feet. So you should be able to get cars in and out a little bit quicker, though you're still going to have all of the backups associated with the school. Absolutely.
Is that going to be a one-way on your two entrances or is it?
The driveway is one-way.
So.
Correct.
Enter up at the top.
Exit at the bottom. And that was a suggestion of some of our neighbors.
They'll pull in a little bit before they have to turn.
Well, and that was one of the suggestions of some of the neighbors was to keep our traffic on our site. So it's, it's a matter of the people who are already on Oak letting somebody out of this site when, you know, somebody sees fit rather than if they're out, they're contributing to the overall line of traffic, which.
I do see that being ignored if there is a backup, but that's impossible to enforce. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I would, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just have some questions about the the landscape plan. So for line of sight, we do have regulations in our landscape bylaw that says that you can't find anything higher than three feet. And it's like a 10-foot triangle on either side of the intersection.
Sure.
So that is addressed. Sorry, I think that's our consequence. So that that is addressing the bylaw, so I don't see why a waiver would interfere with the safety of the intersection. And also, I know we require a buffer along West Main Street and on the front edge of the building, so it would be a big waiver. In this case, there'll be a lot of landscaping you're foregoing. But it is a residential use in a residential area, so I don't know how the planning board feels about it.
I would still, I love the project. I think it's a nice way the way it is right now.
Thank you.
But I would appreciate, I would prefer to have the landscaping plan in place and to see.
And I understand.
Just to dress it up, because especially if people have concerns on the Oak Street, you know, nice landscaping and designing that, I think would help bear the butters to the other side on Oak Street.
Our bioretention basin is is a primarily perennial bioretention basin. I don't tend to plant shrubs and trees in them because of of how they grow in in something like this. But we also left 18-foot wide islands at the front of each one of these units for exactly that that point.
Yeah, I think that would really help.
Happy to provide.
Yep.
I think, I think we've granted waivers on the amount of, the amount of shrubs and the amount of trees and different things, but not having the plan essentially, I almost feel like I have to look at it from, there are no shrubs anywhere.
Right.
Because if it's not in the plan, then it doesn't exist.
I'm happy to provide the landscape plan before we meet again.
So I know at least one member of the public put a comment in via the Zoom chat. I'm not sure if we have any additional questions, otherwise I'll ask if there's anybody in person or in the meeting who'd like to make a comment for the record. Alan, since you're virtual, I'll call you out directly. Is there anything you'd like to ask at this time or no?
No, I'm good right now, thank you.
So again, this is a public hearing. This is the first time we're discussing this project. If there's anybody in person who'd like to speak related to the project, I ask you to please come up to the podium. If there's anybody joining us virtually who'd like to make a comment or a statement, you can either, you can come off mute and say that you'd like to speak. If we get a bunch of people, then I'd ask that you please use the reactions function of Zoom to quote unquote, raise your hand. Perfect, thank you. That way we don't have people talking over each other like every other conference call I've been on today. So the name on the meeting here is Dan P. I'll ask if you can just state your name and address for the record, please. And if you'd like to come off camera, you can, otherwise you don't need to.
Is this me now?
Yes, it is.
Or someone else?
Go for it.
This is Dan Pearson, 14 Elm Street. I would just like to note that my computer service was cut out a moment ago because I received a call from the town of Norton that there is a big house fire on Carlton Street and water could be discolored in the rest of town. The reason why I am making this comment is I I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other about this potential new housing, but this might be a good place to just note that our town is getting too big as far as as the the population goes. And I think we have to, we have to slow down. So whether it's here or it's somewhere else, this just, this large fire on Carlton Street just underscores our condition. There are now, I guess, just in conclusion, I think there, there are, what, 20,000 people in town now, whereas 50 years ago, there were only, I don't know, six, 6,000? So that's, that's about the end of my, my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, for your comments. Okay. And are there any other comments that anybody would like to make? I did see a message come up in the chat. Meetings in the Zoom chat are not read into the public record, so if you'd like to make those statements, we do need you to make them directly. So I'll take a minute and just see if anybody else joining us virtually or via in person would like to say anything else as it relates to this project.
I'd like to say something.
If somebody in person coming up to the podium here, so I'll, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Laura Borke and I live at 5 Oak Street, directly across the street from said development. I have some concerns regarding traffic, which Laura mentioned. I agree with everything that she has said. I have three young children and, you know, I would like to be able to play in my front yard without having extra traffic and extra people. And I'm concerned about where the driveway is and I, I know that there's only so many ways you can put a driveway there. I understand that, but my driveway is very close to that driveway. And so for me backing out of my own driveway, I could be dead anyway, trying to get out of my own driveway. But just extra people and visitors and, you know, there's not enough space, they're parking on the street. So I have concerns about traffic. I have concerns about the traffic getting backed up if you're trying to take that left right onto that property. So I don't know, I just, I have concerns about that and I just want that to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we have an additional hand raise in the Zoom meeting. The name on the meeting says Carleen Johnson. So if you'd like to unmute and just state your name and address for the record, please?
All right. I am from Duncan and we live right across the street at 232 West Main Street. Not only do we have issue with 233, but we also have issue with the zero West Main Street, which is next door, which is a dead-isticed four-person. I came in a little bit late, so you'll have to bear with me. This is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings, but this directly affects me on both of these. I have a small child and we have no one on either side of this, and I'm just concerned about the traffic, the amount of people that will be having come into this area. And I always see the amount of fire trucks, incinerators and everything else that are coming around here. And I have hit it, probably about twelve accidents right up front, from the corner of Oak and West Main Street. And I have a lot of issue with both of these, only for that simple fact, that it just seems like they're driving way too much in this riddled, heated area of town.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. After those comments, I'll again go to the board and see if we have any additional questions for the applicant. I know they did provide a traffic study and the existing property is a three-family. This would be a four-family. So in terms of incremental quote unquote families on the lot, we're not talking about a giant increase, but in terms of traffic and the orientation, everything else, it's...
It's .3 in the morning and .6 at prime night.
Correct. For for the peak hour, six overall increase in average daily trips.
Right.
So we go from 94.6 to 100.8, I believe.
In the event one of these people has a birthday, graduation, party of some kind, when do you anticipate their guests to park?
So the parking complies with the Norton zoning bylaw. Having parking spaces in front of the garages, again, increases that total parking. It is not actually a requirement to overplan for the eventuality that somebody may or may not have a party. So we, we have not done that as it is not a requirement in the zoning bylaw. We've provided the required number of spaces on the site, and then, as I explained earlier, technically each each property does have an additional two spaces associated with it, though we cannot call them spaces.
Can I also ask why you have proposed to go from existing three-unit multifamily to four units?
That was the choice of the developer.
Would you agree that in the event somebody were to hold a event, they have little recourse but to park on the street?
So what I would say about that is as our neighbor has come up and said she currently backs out of her driveway, if our neighbor were to have a party, they would be doing the exact same thing.
But a single-family residence?
Correct. And the likelihood of any of these four families having a party all at the same time, we're talking about a single party the same way one of our neighbors may have a single party. So while I understand the concern, it would be...
So it's Christmas.
Sure.
They're all hosting.
Okay.
That could conceivably happen.
It is still not a requirement of either the town of Norton zoning bylaw or the requirements of the zoning board for the variance we've asked for.
This is a site plan review, not a special permit? Yes. I think from a practical standpoint, looking at the map, I would expect that they would probably send people to try and poke, park on Homer's Farm Road or walk from the bank.
Even the middle school?
Middle school's further. They probably, they're tricentennial first, but that would probably be what would happen. Would that be desirable? Probably not, but from a practical standpoint, that's what I imagine would probably happen if the spaces in front of the building were, were full. Okay. So we've asked the applicant to prepare a landscape plan. Is there anything else that we would like them to give us additional information on? Give us additional, provide additional guidance on? I know we talked about the orientation of the building and things like that, and I think they've provided their rationale. We can like it or not like it?
It makes sense with the septic system, why they did what they did.
That would be the big thing that you don't want to touch, yes, from an engineering standpoint.
And just to that point, you know, obviously, the danger would be if they tried to park back in the yard, you know, with septic system there, that could lead to, you know, a car going in the ground essentially, because, you know, those can be, those lanes unstable, there would be no way for them to get back there and even try that, right?
So what we would do is prepare a landscape plan that basically provides trees in that area because that is the yard that is open. And then there's a couple of of landscaped islands along the front as well as the the front yard. So we certainly can address that with the landscaping.
Okay.
If you can't get to it, you can't park there.
Yes, this bus.
I can't call you, I'm just...
This bus may, remember that that used to be the start of the Homer Farm, the farm
Thank you, Peter. Any additional questions or comments related to this project at this time, other than right now, I think the only homework we've given you is the landscaping plan? Is there anything else, Maria, from your perspective, that they need to meet in terms of bylaw requirements?
I don't think so. I think the lighting plan, I just want to make sure you weren't proposing any like light posts. If it's residential lighting, you're fine, you don't need to provide one.
Correct. That is, that is our intention.
Yeah.
And in terms of preparation, et cetera, our next meeting is on the 25th and then I believe the 9th of May. Whatever the Tuesday is in that period.
For the 25th, when would you need the landscape plan by to be able to consider it?
I believe the deadline that we had set was the Thursday prior.
The Thursday prior.
Okay.
I know that this is, that next week is April, School Vacation Week, which presents challenges for any number of things.
Yes.
So. Do you have a...
So if you wanted to do the 25th, the suggested time would be the 20th.
20th, okay. If we can continue to the 25th, then I will know by tomorrow afternoon whether or not that's, that's reasonable and I will submit the request accordingly.
Okay. And if you aren't able to make the 25th, let us know and we will...
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Anything further other than a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue special permit, 25.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, excuse me. Site plan review, 18654.
And that's to April the 25th?
April the 25th.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or comment related to that motion? Okay. I will go through the roll. Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
Thank you very much. See you on the 25th.
Thank you. The final item on our agenda, given the continued bylaw discussion, is an overview of the Life Science overlay district. I'm not sure if they are...
They're not here yet. I told them at age 15, assuming we're going to talk about solar, like violence first. Sorry.
So if they're not here, then let's go back to the continuation of our discussion of the town meeting warrants and life science discussion can close the meeting as posted. So we have two proposed amendments to zoning bylaw articles to discuss, both of which we discussed at our last meeting. The floodplain district and the large, and the solar bylaw. So in terms of the solar one, Alan, thank you for your thoughts in terms of a, uh, an adjusted, um, grid for large-scale solar. Which your proposal was essentially, um, change, put R sixty away from large-scale solar and move commercial and industrial from a site plan review to a special permit. And that is compared to the draft language, correct?
Yes, um, the existing, what you see on that chart is what our current bylaws say. To my interpretation, it's a little scattered right now. The solar requirements of how it can be made is in like three or four different places and it's not super clear. But I tried my best to translate that into a table format, and that's what you're seeing there. Also, that's existing, and you see in the marker was Alan's proposed changes to it.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's gonna be too restrictive or gone, but that already, I would really, I would really probably put a no in also. But I don't know, it seems like this needs a ton more work, in my opinion also. I don't know, there's so much other direction you could go with this. I don't know if it's gonna be ready for this town meeting, quite honestly.
So that's, that's the first discussion. We've talked, the, a lot of the work with this bylaw is adding definitions, but all of these definitions feed into this use table, so I think. Does everybody else feel it's kind of everything or nothing with this bylaw? We can't add the definitions if we're not addressing the use table?
Agreed.
Hundred percent.
So. For before we get into the nitty-gritty of this, do, we talked about it at length at the last meeting. We can talk about it again at length this evening. Do we feel, I'll, I'll do a straw poll here, this is not an official vote. Does anybody feel like, no matter what happens tonight, we're not gonna be in a position where we feel comfortable sending this to town meeting with this discussion and that we should, as we discussed last time, we had the option to punt and look at this another time. Does anybody feel like they wanna punt right now? Obviously, we're gonna need a vote on this in the end. If we're, if we want, if we feel like no matter what we talk about tonight, we wanna punt, we should punt. Then the AG reviews nothing. If we wanna give a briefing to the select board as to why we did it, I'm happy to do that. So.
I think punting is the right move for now.
I'm seeing lots of thumbs up on punting here.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
Alan, are you in agreement here?
Yes.
Okay. So our recommendation, so if that's the case, we have all of this. Is this something that we feel we want to try to move forward at fall town meeting?
I'd say that's a reasonable goal.
I think off the bat, if, before we move forward, before town meeting, there's gonna be some type of, more of a public information session also, maybe something else that gets.
Yeah, can we create a town board?
Since such a hot button pocket for certain areas of town already.
Yeah, okay. I assume they haven't set a date for fall town meeting yet. So fall town meeting would generally be, somebody help me, when? Octoberish, okay. So October, we're saying that warrant articles would be needed in by, I'll call it September first, just to give us some extra time there. So we would wanna have discussed all of this by the end of August, which means if we were gonna do a public information session, we'd be looking at July or so. Just from a rough back of my hand, work backwards, is that? Is there anything in this that we think needs specific study? Obviously, when, if we're talking about this in July, we don't wanna have the same discussion over again. I know, uh, Mr. Cogliano, last time offered his, uh, his opinions on the matter, so I'm sure that he'll be involved. Is there anything else that we wanna make sure we review, other than the battery, the energy storage systems and?
I'm thinking something to do with water resource protection districts, anything else, well, that we can limit.
Okay.
There's another district that's not coming to mind, another existing overlay. Um, also, we might wanna, that would be allowed in.
Okay. Okay, uh, so Brian and or Maria, I'm not sure what the best way to do this is, but if we can make a note to remind ourselves sometime in June that we wanna start thinking about this again.
Okay.
And that way we have time to, hey, we were gonna think about this, let's schedule something, let's find, um, a time to review this. And just to confirm, the select board is discussing warrant articles when?
Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Okay. Okay, let me just make a note to myself that, um, do you feel, I know they're gonna ask for a recommendation, which is short paper. Do we feel like they would be looking for a further explanation, uh, from the board relating to this specifically, or not sure?
I don't think, I think they will understand it is something that has been through town meeting before and has proved to be a more sensitive subject. I think they would know that and understand if you might need to study it to make an informed decision later.
Okay.
I think saying that will be enough for them.
Is it too late to pull the warrant article, is it going on or without a warrant?
The warrant gets printed a week before town meeting or gets published before?
Right, when it's closed at a certain point, and there's no reason to vote on it if we just choose to pull the article entirely.
The question is, will the, will the, will the article appear on the warrant? Or has the deadline to pull it completely passed?
I am not.
If it's not moved at town meeting, then it's not moved at town meeting, but it's still printed. I think we're, we would be voting either to pull it and or not to endorse it. I think we can take care of those in one, in one motion.
Yep.
And whatever's point we are in in the process, um, that's where we are. If somebody moves the article at town meeting, I am happy to, uh, discuss why we voted. I would, I would be happy not, I would be happy to explain why we voted not to endorse, uh, putting this forward at town meeting at this time.
Well.
I will not have visual aids, but.
I think at this point, there is just simply a heading article that is there. Unless we give them the draft bylaw, nothing goes in.
Unless they submitted in writing, which they could do.
Yep.
Somebody could print off the draft bylaw and submit it.
They could.
Yeah.
Yep.
But yeah, so, um, okay. So I'll look for a motion to, uh, either pull the warrant article and or vote not to endorse putting this forward at town meeting.
So would.
Second.
Okay, thank you Laura for the motion and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion? I guess I should ask, is there any members of the public here who would like to speak before we act on the motion?
Just two questions. Come up to that.
Yes. I apologize, I asked for the motion before I realized that Mr. Cogliano would probably wanna speak.
Hi, everybody, nice to see you all again. We're halfway there, we're postponing this one. Uh, Joe Cogliano, two oh two Berry Road, two questions. One, what did everybody think of the prohibition language? Did you get that?
The letter that you sent about the A C E C and?
Yes, was that interesting to people, something that they would consider?
I think it's certainly something that we would consider, I think. Alan, you mentioned that's something that we wanted to potentially look at when we look at this bylaw again. Whether Mr. Cogliano's language is final or not, um, it's certainly a point of discussion.
Correct.
I, I guess the better way to ask that is, was there any problem with that language? Did anything jump out that like, eh, you know, that's a problem? Is there any problem that jumped out at you from that language? I thought it was pretty good language, myself.
Who wrote it?
And I started it, but I had somebody finish it, it's better than English.
Let me pull up here.
You know, it has all those things that the AG's office wants and dreams of, all that key language about health, safety, and welfare.
Okay, I've got it, Brian. Okay, I already seen here, sorry. So prohibitive locations, large-scale solar and battery, battery energy storage systems are prohibited, prohibited within floodplain districts, water resource protection districts, aquifers, A C E Cs, and well-protection zones to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and general public. Do the risks posed by the hazardous materials associated with large-scale solar and battery energy storage systems and related risks of fire and explosion, prohibiting them within these areas. Some paraphrasing, it's necessary to protect the interest of the water supply, flooding, storm damage, and the environment for which these districts were established. Allowing them would undermine the purposes which they're established and harm public safety and welfare. With, the last sentence seems a little bit superfluous and, uh, maybe a little bit, I thought I was not, I'm not gonna see the, uh, controls up there, but, I don't wanna say argumentative, that's the wrong word. But, I mean, from a high-level perspective, I don't see.
Any in the right direction, I'll say.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good.
And anything we put together, town council would look at and review and, yeah.
Second question is, um, in terms of postponing this, which I think is, is the right decision because it is so complex and important, what do we think about the idea of two bylaws? One for solar and one for batteries? Because the batteries are a big deal, that's a big hazard risk. And because they can be standalone, they don't need solar, so we've really gotta think about that. And what, what really is gonna take up time here, when we go through this, these discussions, is what do we really wanna do? We, we have to really talk this all out with definitions and what's the impact? Like, I was happy with some of, of what, Alan, did Alan? What Alan did with his, but it was a pretty good strategy. He's basically saying it's as of right and residential, but then he's being more restrictive in other areas like R sixty. It was an interesting strategy, but one of the things that came out of that that jumped out at me was rooftop solar, which can be large-scale solar, uh, that can include that. And so then the question is, and this is, we'd have to look into this, where are industrial buildings in the town? Because some of them are in residential areas. And then if you got, like Walmart, had two-hundred-and-fifty Walmarts that had, uh, large-scale solar on top, which they removed from fires, they had Tesla remove two-hundred-and-fifty of those. But, so this is what I meant, so is that something that we might entertain, two bylaws? As in, I would help by working on that battery bylaw.
Saying that the battery bylaw, if we were more restrictive, that with that, it might limit the large-scale solar with where they're going now with the battery.
No, I'm just saying that batteries are becoming such an issue. Solar doesn't work, and so they've added batteries to try to see if they can keep it going longer because solar is intermittent power. So now they're trying to, to see if they can extend that by adding batteries to it. So what I'm saying is, the batteries are so important, they're so hazardous, we have to be careful where they go, but also because they can be by themselves, they should have their own bylaw. So, you know, in other words, the bylaw would say, this is where batteries, now we have to make sure that it coincides to the solar, otherwise somebody's gonna say, you're prohibiting the solar because you're not allowing the batteries there because of the five-hundred kilowatt and up requirement, uh, that they put through, the deal we are put through recently. So this stuff is really complex, that's what I'm, what I'm saying. I just wanna know if everybody is willing to consider that.
From a practical standpoint, the point of a standalone battery would be used in what application?
Standalone, oh, Carver, they've got a hundred-and-fifty megawatt site that they, uh, actually, they're fighting it, but they're, it looks like it's going through for energy storage. In other words, there, there's a movement in the country also just to have energy storage. Doesn't have to necessarily be for solar, it could be for, for other uses, just to have it stored.
It's an electricity water tower, essentially, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, the, the town of Ton actually has, the Sea of Ton, they have a large, uh, it's like a couple of containers full of batteries that they discharge periodically to the grid when they need to or want to, and it has nothing to do with solar.
Yeah.
Do they have a separate bylaw?
Don't know.
Probably not.
But the, the batteries will be everything from the size to powerhouse, the size of shipping and tanks full of batteries.
Yeah.
It's very, uh.
Okay, so that, that makes sense. I was just trying to think of what would be the scenario where we'd have a battery that wasn't an integral part of a solar system, which we've kinda talked about a little bit with this bylaw, so.
So they're gonna be batteries for residences, these mega packs that Tesla's getting out of it? Then it's gonna be batteries for solar, then there'll be batteries that might be standalone? Would be cutting-edge, there's not a lot of towns that have this stuff, but it's good that we do this because this is really hazardous stuff.
Are there any?
Well, there are towns that are trying to put them in, especially in the western areas of the state where these large solar, solar things have been happening.
I'd prefer to not be the trade center.
Yeah, if, if there, if there is an existing.
Attorney General is going to just say, no, absolutely not, there's no sense in wasting our time.
We, we should, we should research whether there are other bylaws specifically talking about energy storage systems standalone.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point.
And whether they've gotten approval by the attorney generals.
Yes, to a point. First step is, are there any? Second stage is?
Well, if they have high laws, then they've been approved by the attorney general.
Good point, yes. If they weren't approved, then they wouldn't show up anywhere.
Correct.
An example of a problem would be Carver. Carver just simply put them in a use table. That's not a good idea because of the potential hazard of these things, so. Anyway, I just wanted to know if we were at least open to that concept.
I think where this is such a rapidly changing space, somebody eventually will have to be first. So I think, you know, depending on the, the level of research we can do, um, you know, both on law and on, you know, everything that's going into this particular space, you know, I, I don't think being first necessarily is the worst thing in the world. I think that, you know, someone's gonna take that step, and I think if the research is there, you know, which I don't know if it is or not yet, then that might be worth giving a shot to, that's my personal opinion.
If we can find another bylaw, then we'll see. I mean, we are gonna be deep into conversations about thermal runaway and all sorts of fun stuff, so.
Not interested in looking at research that is not peer-reviewed?
Yeah, no, but, I mean, yeah, then, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would this be something, another situation where we could do a subcommittee that could do a couple of meetings and do a little bit of a deeper dive if need be?
Potentially, yes.
We could be dealing with booze, drug report, and others, and marijuana law.
Potentially, yes. Yeah, and if we're gonna start talking about it again in June, that gives us two-plus months to do that stuff? Yeah, it's potential, so. To answer your question, Mr. Cogliano, I think the answer is open to it, yes. What we would decide, we'd have to get there.
Of course, I understand. Okay, I think, uh, I think that's enough for now. Thank you.
Now that I've opened the can of worms, is there any other comments that maybe we'd like to make related to this bylaw propose? Otherwise, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
Uh, so for this round of one-stop funding, I will be asking for, um, sixty thousand dollars to rewrite the bylaws. Um, and that would include getting the help of a land use lawyer or either a planning professional. I already have a call from, uh, land use attorney. This would put us in a timeline to get the zoning redone by October of twenty-twenty-four, uh, if we don't rush. I've done it in the spring, that's a little, it's a very crazy rhythm, but it can't be done, depending on how we wanna do it. That could be something, if you wanna table it until we can do a full codification, and if we give it another year, then there is a possibility that a more case law would come out. I know this is very, it's a little unprecedented, we don't have that many. I know this is very, it's a little unprecedented, we don't have that many cases right now. We could give it a shot, and if they turn it down, the AG attorney, if they turn it down, we'll try again. But if you want to give it more time to see what's out there, that is a possibility. Otherwise, if you don't want to wait that long, I can see if I can get either funds through grants or through the town to get an actual consultant who is familiar with solar uses, and we can talk to experts if you want to have something like that alongside with a solar committee, if that's what it takes. But I would feel more comfortable maybe if the research is got it by someone who is either in the field of land use or in the field of solar.
Okay. Let's see, I was expecting you into a budget discussion. I think the fact that we're postponing this to a potential discussion for fall town meeting doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be in the fall town meeting warrant either.
Okay.
It just means that we're going to pick it back up and discuss it again. There could be new case law tomorrow, there could not be any case law. When we talk about it in June and we're in the same spot that we were, other than that we have a little bit more time to think about it and discuss it. I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything, if we, if there is a potential grant that would help fund some solar expert to help us here, I'm certainly not opposed to that. But I also don't want you climbing down the rabbit hole of what grants can I apply for every single day?
Yeah.
Because you have other things that you need to do.
Okay.
If we're doing a full codification of the bylaws, that is essential, that would be, that's an 18-month process. So this would be happening roughly in the middle of that. For the codification, that is, the process of that is, how much of that is adjusting the bylaws and how much is adjusting all the numbering and references so it actually makes sense?
So last time I did it, the lawyer did everything for us, we did it in nine months. So I would say, seven of those months were substantial discussions. He would rearrange what we had, and then the problematic parts, they gave us like a sushi menu of what you wanted to fix for your new bylaw, that you could fix to address those like holes or legal issues. And then the renumbering and everything, I think they have people who do that, that would be ready in under a month.
Okay. So you said nine months, but you're currently looking at October 2024?
Yes, if we, I would find out if we get the funding by November of this year, because it takes a while to.
So it's, we don't, it's a potential funding that we find out in the fall, and that would be a 12-month process?
Yes.
Okay. I think that we would, that's something to save, and we would talk about it when we bring this back up in a few months.
Okay.
I can't believe June is seven weeks away. That's scary. I mean, if there are grants available to study solar, then great. I'm not sure if those exist, so I feel like that's a hypothetical that we can't tie to, I guess, is that?
Oh, we have 40 hours of CERPIT allocated to us every year. We're using a lot of those for our housing protection plan, but the clock starts ticking again in July 1st. And I can see how many of those hours we would need for something like it. If that's the case, we could just, and no extra cost, we already pay for that every year, so, that could be an option.
I'm not opposed to a cost check on that, certainly.
Okay, you can check on that.
Yeah. If the cost is, that's terrible, that would suck up all of your hours, then that's our answer.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Okay. So again, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on the motion to either pull this from the warrant and/or vote not to endorse for a town meeting? Okay. Jim, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Okay. The other bylaw that we discussed at our last session, that we need to close, that we need to continue our discussions on is related to the FEMA bylaw. Maria, you had correspondence from FEMA that they were, they had essentially approved all the language that is in the bylaw, correct?
Yes, that's final enough for them, everything looks good. It can be approved at town meeting, and it doesn't even need to go through AG approval, it'll just be done. And again, this is something that our town council has reviewed, it is based on a federal template of regulations that the State Division of FEMA has checked. There's very few changes, it's mostly some cleanup items and adding some definitions based on some issues we've had over the years. So there's nothing crazy, or new, really.
Okay. So we have the quote-unquote sign-off from FEMA on this language. I'll ask if any members of the public would like to comment on it?
Yes.
Joe Calagani, two to be wrote. Let me first ask, did everybody get the email that I sent, Maria, was that passed around to everybody?
The one I got was about the provision of batteries.
Oh, you didn't get another one?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, let me just read it to you then. Hi, Maria, I hope you had a nice Easter with your family.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you know that Ed Capone, Norton resident and certified floodplain manager, and I, had a conversation today with Eric Carlson of DCR. We discussed topics from section of the proposed Article 13 floodplain bylaw, including the definition of structure, violations, zones, location, use regulations, prohibitions, unnumbered A zones, and floodway encroachment. As with the proposed Article 22, the issues raised in the floodplain bylaw are too important and complex to have only two public hearings for research, discussion, and feedback in order to prepare and finalize the articles for town meeting. Rather than force the bylaw to fit the impending town meeting schedule, we should prepare comprehensive bylaws to present to town meeting in the fall, especially since both of these bylaws deal with health, safety, and welfare issues. Postponement of Article 13 for further discussion and improvement until fall town meeting was discussed with Eric. He felt postponement was fine, as long as the bylaw was presented at fall town meeting, but not past fall town meeting. Ed Capone and I are willing to work with the planning board to improve the proposed bylaw for the fall town meeting. Also, I'm willing to work with the board to improve the proposed solar bylaw for the fall town meeting. And then I just asked that it be sent, so I'm sorry you didn't get it.
Sorry.
Okay.
So, what I want to do is talk about some issues that I think should be considered.
Before you, do we have correspondence from FEMA in writing that fall town meeting is acceptable for their timeline, or what timeline are we working out for this?
The only thing they reviewed for us was the, if the language was set, all set and final, they said it is good to be approved now. Fall town meeting was never mentioned in my correspondence with them, I had a spring deadline.
What I did was.
So there's a spring deadline from FEMA?
No, this needs to be done by the end of this year, that's our deadline, that's the mandated deadline. So we could technically postpone it until fall if we think it's appropriate.
Okay.
But FEMA didn't raise any red flags with me on the existing law, which doesn't mean it can't be approved, but they were okay with this.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that postponing to fall was something we could do, and, okay, so.
Now I'm gonna tell you why we should, but before I get to that, I wanted you to know that I CC'd Eric Carlson on that, and he said that you could call him if you wanted to, so that, you know, he was aware of what I, what the conversation was.
Okay.
I'll tell you, I'll give you a copy of that. Okay. Let's see. Okay, so first issue, community rating system. So we discussed that a little bit last time we were together, and Norton is only getting a 5% discount on their flood insurance premiums. There are nine categories, or 10 categories, the lowest being zero, so we're one up from the bottom. Believe it or not, Quincy is beating us at 15%. The range is 0 to 45%, which is a big deal, 45% off of your insurance premiums. Now, how do you do that? You have to have credits, and you get credits by doing certain things, which puts you in different classes. So as I said, right now we're at 5%, which is one of the lowest, the goal would be to try to get to 45%. I'll just read this little section from FEMA. As a community engages in these mitigation activities and earns these credits, its residents become eligible for increased flood insurance premium discounts. There are 19 different categories that it can earn credits for, communities. These activities fall into four categories: public information, mapping and regulations, flood damage reduction, and warning and response. So for example, for the mapping and regulation, example of mitigation activity would be not developing on flood-prone land. So I raise this from the standpoint that, A, I think this would be important to the people of Norton, and B, because we should spend a little time looking at this to see if there's any of this we want to include in this bylaw, so we can start to move towards getting these lower rates for the people of Norton. According to yesterday's information, the insurance enforced in Norton is $16 million. There've only been two losses paid, for 312, 728,000. But this is just an example of something that takes time, that we need to investigate and see if there's anything here that we could use before we put forth a bylaw. Second, the Federal Flood Risk Management Standard, or FFRMS. This is a federal program that has been started to deal with climate change, the 500-year flood, and lowering risk to floodplains. What this does is it increases the 100-year flood by two to three feet and the corresponding width, which means all the floodplains are going to expand. Now, right now, this is focused on federal, what they call federal action, which means federal properties, federally financed properties, things like that, but it's moving downstream. How do we know that? Because HUD is now proposing rules that include this, and their discussion period ends, I think it's May 23rd. This is coming to a town near you. So this is something that we should look at and consider, is this something that we should put into our bylaw? So there's two issues. Ed Capone, who is, let me tell you something, Ed Capone is one of the most knowledgeable guys on this stuff in the state. He's been doing, he's, I don't want to say his age, but he's doing this stuff for a long time. He's a certified floodplain manager. We need to get him involved in this, this is the guy you don't have to pay. What was that, 60, what were we talking about, $60,000 for a minute ago? This guy is a resident, he'd be willing to help. He and I had this discussion with Eric Carlson, what were the major points that were covered? Number one, we can take more time to discuss and improve the bylaw, fall town meeting is okay. Number two, Norton's bylaw can be more restrictive than the Mass Model bylaw. Number three, we can expand the definition of structure. Number four, we can add prohibitions, hazardous materials, et cetera. And number five, we can prohibit activity in the floodplain or the floodway. So, do we have to do all those? No, but I think we should have discussions about that stuff, rather than just push something through. Now let's talk about problems with the specific bylaw that's being proposed. Okay. Let me see, I got so many things going on here.
You keep doing this, the state's gonna draft you to help with the next model bylaw.
Yeah. It's funny how you get pulled into things in life that you didn't intend to do. But the point I was trying to make is that this, Ed is a treasure. The guy is expert 30 years in weather, he's an expert in weather, he's an expert in this stuff. He did all this work around the state on dams and everything, he's, this is the guy we want to look at this stuff, and he's honest, which is important. Okay, so we got that, okay, okay. Structure definition, that is complex, because if you, I think you mentioned this, if you change a definition, it can impact so many different areas of the bylaw, you have to be very careful. Eric said that he was okay with the concept of being more inclusive. I described to him the battery structure, how big that is, and what that involves, but you can't call that a house, it's not a house, but it's a structure. So that would be example, violations, if we look at the violation section, it's on, my pages aren't numbered, it's a definition under violation. Now, the Model bylaw listed 60.3, and for some reason, we have identified specific elements of it. My problem with that is, we're better off just saying 60.3, because it covers everything. Why is that an issue? Well, 60.3B, I believe it's subsection 3, in the FEMA guideline, requires a detailed study when you're doing anything over five acres or 50 lots in the floodplain. Versus what was done in another project, which was called a simplified study. Why is a detailed study a big thing? Because a detailed study looks at the flow of the water course. So it's much more important and much more accurate to do that. So I have a problem with the definition of violation. If we look at zones, there are no zone Vs in Norton, so that's not necessary.
But there could be if they change the maps. There could be if they change the maps or anything like that.
I think it's coastal in this case?
Yeah.
We left the definitions as they were, but they're not mentioned anywhere else on the actual bylaw.
Yeah, that's really, it's a coastal, that's the reason why.
Okay.
Yeah, tidal floods.
So.
Imagine if they're gonna make all the floodplains bigger, then maybe something gets into a worse zone.
That's true.
Erosion.
You know, I wanted to do a little bit more investigation on this issue of location, because it's tying it to a dated map of July 6, 2021, but there are issues with the maps, because they've really never been updated, most of them are from the 80s. So that was something that, you know, I honestly haven't investigated enough, other than I know there's a problem there, but I have to do more investigation. If we look at other use regulations, other use regulations, on number four, base flood elevation data, base flood elevation data is required for subdivision proposal or other developments greater than five lots or five acres with unnumbered A zones. So in some ways, that's more restrictive, because it used to be 50 lots, the problem is, and again.
That was a choice made by town staff.
By who? Oh, that's okay, I pulled that against you. The reason I say it is, there's a question is whether or not for a five lot, maybe you could do a simplified method. A detailed method's a big deal, and so, again, this is something that we've got to kind of talk through and figure out. What makes sense for the developers, so that we're not putting undue burden on them, and what makes sense for protecting the town?
That was one that we did discuss, I think, because the Model bylaw has option A or option B. We chose option A, which was the more restrictive one.
Yes, yeah, that was the last hearing.
Right, but so that, what I would say here, in this section four, it should say, base flood elevation data is required for subdivision proposal or development greater than 100, base flood elevation via the detailed method. Now that's in the FEMA guideline from 1995, but rather than have an attorney fight about it, it should be in there. Why? It protects the town. So that would be an example, let's go to another one.
May I ask a question about that? So would you propose then certain thresholds, like anything under a certain amount is simplified and everything over would be a detailed one?
This is where Ed Capone comes in, I want to use his experience, because I'm not a floodplain expert, this guy is. So let's see what he has to say about it.
Okay, he hasn't mentioned any threshold to you, right, he just mentioned the possibility of them?
No, just that I was going with the 50 lots or five acres, which is in the guideline. And, but I just, I wanted to raise it, because there's a potential problem there.
Okay.
Point I'm trying to get across here is that I believe there's a lot more that needs to be done here. Building commissioner, that makes sense, because you need one point of contact, but we somehow have to get conservation involved in here, some kind of an advisory consent role. Eric did not think it needed to be in the bylaw, I think that's probably right, but it needs to be somewhere, so we got to figure out how you do that. Three.
He does a firm map, so he is involved for each project, just not in the main capacity. He does a firm map, so he is involved for each project, just not in a, not in the main capacity.
Are you talking about the building commissioner? Or are you talking about the conservation director?
Conservation director does the firm maps. A building commissioner does everything else.
Right. So I, I guess, I don't know what the apparatus is for the town, but we've got to figure out, how do we get the building commissioner to get the advice and consent of the conservation director for certain things? When you talk about, what are those certain things? All right, next, on 3.15. So this language, base flood elevation data for subdivision proposals when proposing subdivisions or developments greater than five lots. The proponent must provide technical data. That's the key, to determine base flood elevation for each developed process, show and design plans, but I would say, technical data based on the detailed method. So that language should go back in on number four, but you add that. Then there's a problem with 175, 13. formerly 16, now 14 unnumbered A zones. This was a little confusing for me. I thought, and this isn't final language, but I thought it would be better if it said something like, in A zones, in the absence of FEMA, BFE data and floodway data, the applicant will provide, and the town staff will simply review, base flood elevation and floodway data available from federal, state, or other source in compliance with FEMA regs and procedures required for new construction, substantial improvements, or other developments in Zone A period. Best available data shall be used as the basis for elevating residential structures, et cetera. So I think that's better, but you know, I'm always open up for new suggestions. And then the floodway encroachment, that doesn't even have to be in there. We do not have to allow flood, floodway encroachments. The Mass Model bylaw gives that as their minimum. That doesn't mean we have to do it. What are you doing in a floodway? Why are you there? You shouldn't be in a floodway. Houses that have already been built, you know, there, there's exceptions for all that stuff. But, so my recommendation would be to get rid of 13.15 floodway encroachments. If you've got your heart set on that, then you've got to add some language to it. You've got to tie it back to the permitted uses. Otherwise, I think you're opening up yourself for a lawsuit. So what do you think? What do you want to do?
So Maria, just to confirm, this, this whole FEMA bylaw is because Norton, they're going through a cycle, and Norton is up in this cycle for the county, or I forget exactly what the... We're in this cycle. Is there a limit to how much FEMA involvement they can have with us on this in terms of, have they gone as far as they can go, or?
Do you mean if we can work with them more collaboratively?
Let's see. Is there a point where we become the problem child, asking for too much support?
I, I doubt that they will resent that, just because they would probably like to see more regulations on floodstones. I am sure they would be able to set up at least one or two meetings with us, if we wanted to discuss it in greater length. My understanding with Eric Carlson is he is very, he collaborates, like he is very, you know, friendly and helpful. I don't think he would resent that, if that's the direction we wanted to move forward. We just need to do this by the end of the year. And again, everything here was just the Mass bylaw, which is the bare minimum for the state. If you want to go above and beyond, that is fine. That is just, um...
Yeah.
It, it will be a change, you know, maybe for the better, but a lot of Norton is on the floodstone. We are at very low elevation. So depending on what we regulate, either for better or the worse, a consequence is that we might see less development, you know, that could be a good thing, it could be a bad thing, but it's just something to consider that.
Is there anything that would prevent us from doing this in phases, where we... Would we in theory be able to put forward the language that we have now as the Model Bylaw? Check the box, and then revisit this and make sure FEMA signs off on it for fall town meeting or future? Or is this, FEMA's going to look at one bylaw, you don't get to do two?
You want like any Plan A and Plan B?
Uh, Plan One and Plan Two. Plan One and Plan Two, not necessarily options, but a sequence.
Various nodes.
Right, exactly. Phase one is, we have met the state standard. Nobody's going to lose their flood insurance, et cetera.
Get it approved and then move forward.
And then, or, like, is, is that kind of project phasing something that is okay? Or is it, because we're in this cycle, we only do it once, and then FEMA's going to be like, no, I got to move on to Carver?
No, no, I think there's no limitation on how many bylaws you can submit, or how often you can change them. I think.
Because this is the FEMA cycle, I wanted to ask that.
I think the FEMA cycle only applies to the maps. The reason that they're, been going through this, is as they've been updating the maps, they want to make sure that we're referring to the most updated maps. That's really it. There's not, not like they're only reviewing like a specific set of towns right now. So I think a phase approach would be appropriate. That way, we could have, cover ourselves for now, and then.
Yeah, I don't agree with that. I think we should, I think what we should do is...
I know you want to do it once and do it right.
Right, let's do it right.
But I also don't trust town meeting. But I also don't trust town meeting.
What do you mean?
To...
If we all work together, we can get this passed a town meeting.
But.
Honestly.
Yeah.
You know, what we've got now is okay. The, Eric Carlson is saying, it's okay, just make sure you do it by town meeting.
Right.
Uh, maybe we could do it before. I mean technically, I bet you, I mean, we could probably get something done in one or two months. It's just that there's no way that it could get done for Thursday.
I understand, yeah. Now, the question, the question is from a...
I promise you it'll get done by town meeting.
The bylaw, the bylaw we have.
What, what, what do you want? I'm putting myself on TV. I promise, this will get done for town meeting.
No, so.
Camera's not on you.
I mean, we can continue to talk about this, but we have, option one is, we look at this as the Model Bylaw, and we move forward with it at spring town meeting. Option two is, we don't move forward with it at spring town meeting, and we do it at fall town meeting. Option two, option three would be, we do both. Or we do the second phase of it, either in the fall, or next spring, or something like that. From a town meeting perspective, saying, we are adopting the state's Model Bylaw from FEMA, so everybody keeps their flood insurance, is simple messaging from a, if we go, if we're going to be more aggressive than the state, that's fine. But the messaging is, we have taken the state's Model Bylaw, and we have done X, Y, and Z to it, which is a different discussion. So that's, um, that's for the board to decide how we want to move forward with this. Obviously, whatever, all the things that Mr. Hovland has pointed out, I don't know if I agree with all of them, but I certainly don't disagree with all of them either. But that we would not have those, I think, ready for spring town meeting.
I would feel comfortable with, we're already putting the Solar Bylaw off until the fall, so it seems like we're stacking up a lot of work. So if we could get this at least approved, and then come back with a more stringent Phase Two, that would help get us more points, as you said, credits that would help the insurance plan. I would be fine with that. I think it would be a good idea to get this, at least initially, taken care of, so that if something were to fall through in the fall, we'd have a safety net to fall back on.
I agree with the phase approach.
Anybody else have any additional thoughts?
I think we have to bring it to spring, because if it doesn't pass in spring, we need a second chance, and that's fall.
But I do respect all the work. You definitely come prepared, and you definitely give me a lot of things to think about and rely on. So I appreciate all your hard work and efforts.
Thank you. If you're going to go forward with this, could we at least remove that 13.15? Because that is less restrictive than our original bylaw. Not more restrictive. That's the floodway encroachments. That's like the, you know, poison apple of floodway lovers.
So.
Let's see. Because you can always bring that up, but that second one, if you want to revisit it. Would you think Joe had?
So, can we share that in the, are you in the Zoom, Maria, or no?
No, I'm not.
Brian, are you able to pull up? It's in the combined memo for this meeting.
By the way, Eric Carlson said it was okay to remove it, just so you know. No pressure.
Well, let's take his word for it.
Well, he's the, he's the DCR guy.
As much as we trust you, I think we would need that from a, to know that he said it, I'd need to see it in writing from him, kind of, because I'm a CYA kind of guy.
Sure, I guess we could call him tomorrow.
Yeah, so, okay. So we're going to pull up the memo here, just to make sure that we're talking about the floodway encroachment specifically. And obviously, Mr. Cubliano, you know that you're free to make any floor amendment to anything that we put forward anyway. Okay. Okay, so here we go. So this is the section in question. So in zones A, A130 and AE, along watercourses that have not had a regular floodway designated, the best available floodway data shall be used to prohibit encroachments in floodways, which will result in any increase in flood levels within the community during occurrence of a base flood discharge. And in zones A130 and AE, along watercourses that do have a regulatory floodway designated on the town, on the town's farm encroachments are prohibited, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements, or any adopt of a regular floodway that must have been demonstrated through analyses performed in accordance with engineering practice, that the encroach would not result in, okay. So really, point two is the only one that matters, in that if there's a regulatory floodway, you need to demonstrate that it's not going to make it any worse. Point one is saying, if there is no flood, floodway on the map, then everything else applies.
Um, you're going to get a fight over the language that says, shall be used to prohibit encroachments in floodways, which would result in any increase in flood levels within the community during the occurrence of the base flood discharge.
Yeah.
So you're going to get somebody that says, well, our engineer says it won't do it.
And that's why I'm a peer review.
Yeah.
But yes, so the removal of that section would essentially, if you take away Zone Two, that means there's no recourse for anything in a regulatory floodway. Is that, is that, am I reading that correctly, Maria?
Yes, but we have a similar provision in our current bylaw that says that if you have a regulatory floodway designated in the firm map, encroachments are prohibited in the regulatory floodway, which would result in any increase in flood levels within the community during the occurrence of the base flood discharge. In my opinion, that's very similar to this. This is just phrased differently, and this is just, again.
Yeah, it's, it's basically saying, you can't make it worse.
Yeah, which is not a change. What we had is just phrased.
It's phrased slightly differently, but it's saying, if you're in the floodway, you can't make it worse.
Yes.
So it's not saying you can't do anything in the floodway.
Yes.
And if we take it away, then, and if we eliminate it completely, then there's no delineation of how to encroach in the floodway, so you can't.
Yes.
Okay. So. I think we've come to the, we're basically, the temperature of the board is that we would like to put forward a bylaw at spring town meeting with a potential phased approach at a later date. Do we feel that this change is something that we would like to evaluate for spring town meeting? From the board's perspective?
I think if we're doing it in phases, I would feel more comfortable, instead of giving us more time to look at this, and again, get what we needed, right, and like, as you said. So I would prefer to be this, like the Phase Two, if we were going to remove something. That's where my comfort level would be.
Okay. Okay. And any members of the public, not to kick you off the podium, Mr. Cubliano, is anybody else here in the meeting, or in the virtual meeting, who would like to talk about the FEMA bylaw at this time? And I'll stare at the screen for 10 seconds to see if anybody wants to raise their hand.
I've got something else to say. So does that mean, then, we're thinking about keeping this in?
At this point, yes.
Okay. If we're going to do that, can we add a line to it that will make it more clear as to what this relates to? Is that something we could do? The line would be up above number one, and it would say, for permanent uses pursuant to 175, 13.4B, the following shall apply. Meaning that this applies to permitted uses. Why? Because permitted uses have the least impact. I go back to the same thing. What do you want to build in the floodway? It should, if you're going to do anything, it shouldn't be in the floodway, but if you're going to do anything, it should just be permitted uses. What are those? If you look at 13.4B.
By permitted uses, you mean as-of-right uses?
I guess, I guess these would be called as-of-right uses. So it'd be agricultural uses, it would be forestry and nursery uses, outdoor recreation uses, conservation of water plants and wildlife, wildlife management areas, temporary non-residential structures, and buildings lawfully existing prior to the adoptions of these provisions. Those are permitted uses. The only way this makes sense is if it, if it's talking about that. And so I'm just saying, let's clarify it, so that nobody files a lawsuit against the town, saying, oh, we can do that, we got a special permit, now we're a permitted use, so we get to encroach in the floodway. That's why I'm adding it.
I, I would like to think that somebody came forward with a special permit in a floodway that we would address it from that context.
Well, I, I think you would. I'm not worried about you. I'm worried about a high-priced lawyer. Or hers.
As long as he's based in Norton, the revenue comes through Norton.
So what do you think? That's an easy change.
But it's also a change to the model language, which...
It was already signed off on, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's signed off from FEMA, again.
Right.
We have the opportunity to restrict it. When we're tying it to the definition, we're inserting a meaning which feels correct, but to a point, it's also adding some nuance that isn't present in the Model Bylaw.
Could have some implications.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm...
We're saying it applies to permitted uses, which makes sense, right?
Yes.
And those permitted uses are the only ones that would be allowed at a floodway anyway.
Yeah.
Which, yeah, but by permitted uses, it opens up the, is it as-of-right? Is it anything with a permit? Is it, so...
In other words, what I'm saying is, if you want to go this route, I don't recommend this route at all. But if you want to go this route, shouldn't we be doing it for the least impactful uses? Does that make sense?
I, speaking personally, if we're going, I'm hesitant to change the Model Bylaw language, especially if we're going to pursue it as a phased approach. I can't, I'm only one member of the board, so.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So put this as another concern, that we would love to improve it in Phase Two.
Yeah, definitely.
I'd be comfortable with that.
Yeah, make sure that when we talk about permitted uses, we're not opening up another can of worms, that we're tying back to something else that we're not intending to.
Right.
Now, that doesn't mean you won't support me at town meeting, if I bring it up on the floor, right? I want to see those hands go up.
I will say, I will say that we heard significant, we heard significant and well-researched testimony from Mr. Cubliano. And we just, and we chose not to include it in the bylaw we submitted for spring to defer to discussion. Yes, as in, we heard you. I'd like to say that when you testified at the town meeting, you're going to say, we heard you out, and we didn't tell you to go away, revisit.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do still need a motion to endorse this article for town meeting. And we are not making any further changes to the text, so it is as written, or as proposed.
Motion to approve this current version for down, spring town hall.
Any further discussion on the motion to endorse? Okay, we'll go through the roll here. Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. So that concludes our discussion of town meeting, the town meeting warrant. The final item on our agenda is to hear an update on the life science overlay district. I think I saw people come in earlier in the meeting that are ready to talk about that. While they get set up, Maria, do you just wanna summarize your memo as to where the project came from, and what we're looking to do?
Yeah, so, this is a project that's fully funded by the community planning grant. Under my predecessor, we received twenty-five thousand dollars to do a specific zoning overlay that will address the needs of life science districts, which is a very profitable use of town and brings a lot of very good jobs locally. So the idea is just to amend our zoning, in our zoning map, to be able to better accommodate this use, bring in more tax revenue, bring in local, you know, economic growth, and this is the team we have. We have TPs from Par Corporation and Kathy McCabe from...
You can run the process.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll introduce ourselves, and thank you for the introduction, and tell you a little bit more about, about us. So, Tim Thies, I'm with Par Corporation, I'm a civil engineer. I focus mostly on water and wastewater and utility infrastructure, which is an important component whenever you're talking about life sciences and technology, and bringing in those types of uses to support that. I've been working in the industry for a little over twenty years, doing all type of utility infrastructure work, I'm a design engineer by practice, but I do a lot of this planning work with Kathy McCabe, Kathy's a planner. I'll let Kathy introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her history, but we've worked together on dozens of these...
Lots of projects.
Yes, of these kinds of projects together, these types of studies.
And we, we both are very familiar with Mansfield Wastewater Treatment Plant, because we worked with Foxborough when you guys were all negotiating your agreements, so we probably have a better understanding than most planners and engineers of the joint wastewater treatment plant, plan. I'm Kathy McCabe, as Tim mentioned, I'm a planner. I frequently collaborate with Par Corporation, though I have my own practice in planning and economic development, and we understood that Norton was looking at, and received some state money to develop a life sciences overlay district, kind of trying to capitalize on the recent investment of Anilum on building their new facility. So we went, so we thought it would be good, we started this past quarter working with Maria and also the town manager, but we thought it would be helpful to have a discussion with the planning board, because we're talking about zoning, and that's really your bread and butter. I've, I've done work in and around life sciences, I've worked on the, on the developer's side, as well as the town side, looking at life science issues, and working specifically for life science developers. Par Corporation has represented many life science companies, including names you're probably familiar with, so, so we have a background that seems to fit, as well as having lots of experience on the public side. So, we thought, we'd like to have this as interactive, so, don't be shy, I don't think any of you probably are, so we thought we'd kind of talk about it at a high level and kind of introduce the project, and I wanna say, we're at the beginning, so we're not coming with recommendations at this point, but more to kind of introduce it, listen to you, what your concerns and interests and priorities are, and then we'll wanna come back and have more discussions about specific recommendations and findings, so, do you mind advancing?
Let's go, I'm just taking a minute. There you go.
So, so we thought we'd talk about why would you want to develop a life sciences overlay district, because you already have some provisions in your zoning ordinance. And one is to really enhance your attractiveness, you've already gotten on the map in the life science biotech community with having a major new plant facility. Our understanding is you really wanna grow your tax base, and particularly on your commercial and non-residential side, and life sciences provides for high-value properties with relatively minimal impact for similar-sized projects. Also, I think one of the reasons why they have a life science overlay is to really clarify the town's expectations and objectives of what you want as to land use issues for companies that may approach you. And also, you identified life sciences as a priority in your master plan as potential economic development. As we, as you probably know, Massachusetts is a global life science research and development, but we also rank number one in global exports of medical devices, so it's not just research and development, it's also products, and I think it's important to be cognizant that really, over the last decade, there's more manufacturing of life science-related products in Massachusetts than there used to be. It used to be that we did the research and all the manufacturing was either overseas or in North Carolina, or Pennsylvania, or Texas, but that's changing. And I think one of the reasons why is that the timeframe for manufacturing and expectation from research to delivery on the street has really, people want it shorter and faster, and there's a whole rise of personal medicine and customizing things, so that need for quick manufacturing, plus the Commonwealth has been really committed to trying to strengthen manufacturing options. So while R and D tends to be headquartered in Cambridge, Kendall Square, the Seaport area, and Boston, life science manufacturing is expanding, and the need for researchers to be close to manufacturing, like, within an hour, half, two hours, is really important in terms of growing the life science category. As I said, it's a high-value, high-pay. I think the other thing to be cognizant is, it's not just manufacturing, there's many allied life science support services, like labs. So, I'm sure, as planning board members, you're familiar with overlay districts, but I think it's important to kind of just highlight, there's two different major types of overlay districts. There's the, what I call the traditional overlay district, where a property, a parcel is subject both to the underlying zoning, say it's industrial or commercial, but it's also subject to the overlay regulations. And your water protection district or floodplain regulations are a good example of that kind of overlay, that, if you're like, okay, this is industrial, but there's a touch of it that's in, on the floodplain or the water protection district, so you have to meet both the industrial standards, as well as the floodplain standards, or the water protection standards. So, both sets of regs apply. There's also another kind of overlay, which basically, you have, you have one set of standards, say, in, say in a commercial or industrial district, and then you can say, well, you can choose to look at the overlay instructions, or you can do the underlying zoning instructions. So, some, there may be some regs that are the same, but maybe for certain uses, like in life sciences, we might be more generous, or we may be more specific or restrictive, depending upon the policies you wanna advance. So that really, the applicant has to decide at, from day one, are you going to the underlying zoning regs or the overlay? So in this example, the beige and that little set of layers, that's the land, you know, the blue could be the underlying zoning, and the green could be the overlay. So, in the substitute process, you either do the blue regs or the green regs, you don't do, you know, it's not a combo, it's either-or. So sometimes with overlay districts, you have to be very specific, you have to remember, oh yeah, there's an FAR, and oh yeah, there's setbacks, it's not just kind of the general thing. And those could be common, but you've gotta be very specific. So, an example of that is Massachusetts did smart growth regulations, or forty R districts, that was an example that the forty R took precedent over the underlying zoning. So that's kind of, our life science would probably fall into an overlay as a substitute.
Is there a specific reason for that? Or are you gonna get there? Why there usually is a substitute, as opposed to a traditional overlay?
Well, traditionally, you would, and put it inherent as an amendment to your regulations, which is another option. So if we're going along this path, and you go, well, we'll just put it in the regs, that's perfect, you know, then it's by right or by special permit explicitly, but maybe there's some things you might wanna keep, you know, like parking requirements, or some of the other dimensional requirements, maybe you wanna have a little more flexibility on life science, whereas you don't want it for other uses, so then you, you have kind of that fork in the road.
You asked me not to be shy, so I'm trying.
No, no, that's good, because it, it can, it's confusing, and, you know, the other, sometimes people pass overlay districts because they think it's easier, you know, the public or town meeting will be more accepting, because we're keeping the old zoning. It gets really confusing. So, that's why, you know, sometimes if it's something that we can live with, I would recommend a zoning amendment, but we were asked to look at an overlay district, so, but if, after discussion, you think we should go to keep it, putting it in the bylaw, that is perfectly acceptable. It's what's best for Norton, and best for clean administration and clarity. Because I don't wanna do all this and everyone be confused after the fact.
It's not helping me, but that's not...
Yeah, that's, that's, it's not helpful for the companies, it's not helpful for you as planning board members or town meeting members. Everyone needs, we all need clarity, you know, there's enough confusion in life. So, this is kind of how we see the development process, we really wanna, we're here to introduce the project, and really listen, and we've started talking with people, some of the stakeholders, we've talked to Anilum, we've talked to Weeden, we've talked to some other folks, and we will be talking in, you know, the balance of the month to other stakeholders. Tim's really got help analyze locations and zones, bec, as well as myself, because that's both planning and infrastructure engineering, so that's important, and then using that, those pieces of information, and having a discussion with you, we'll draft an, you know, an overlay or zoning pieces, and have a discussion, because we're not gonna just come and recommend, say, pass it, let's, I think it's important to kind of thrash it up, and then we're hoping you'll adopt it. So, that's really the focus of it. So, next. And were you about to ask a question? I, I didn't know if you were stretching or...
Just stretching.
Okay.
Right?
Peter's the, the mayor of Norton, so he...
Can we have one slide up at a time? Great, thank you. So, you already have life sciences in your zone, zoning, in terms of your village commercial, the village center, core area, your commercial area, and your industrial area. You're more likely to really look, and I highlighted what your code bylaws says today. So, life science offices, like their HR offices, or their payroll, or kind of just their offices, you're willing to put that anywhere, and that's kind of like a meat-and-potato office, there's not, there's not really any special equipment that's entailed. So that, that makes sense.
I think...
But that's...
We had to fix that, because it wasn't that bad.
Yes, if it's less than ten thousand square feet, or less than twenty-five parking spaces.
Yeah.
Research, technical labs, including life sciences, as long as they're less than ten thousand, the only place that's as-of-right is an industrial district, which is your kind of hot pink purple areas. Special, you don't want it in the core, it's okay in village commercial, if, you know, and it's okay in the commercial, which is the red, the village commercial in the core is more the pale, pale pink. You know, manufacturing, you're okay with it as-of-right in an industrial, if it's less than ten thousand. Uses greater than ten thousand are all special permit. And one of the things to think about is, key issues on siting is readiness and as-of-right permitting, because biotech, and I think the pandemic is a good illustration, people were struggling really fast to work in the lab, you know, twenty-four-seven, get out vaccines, manufacture them, and get into production. And so that, there, you know, were, that rush to production and that rush to manufacturing, not that people want to be unsafe, but they, they wanna compress time. And life science is still a fairly young industry, so you have a lot of startups who are doing research, and once they have that clinical trial approval from FDA, they wanna go like that. So, they have not invested in manufacturing facilities, there may be contract manufacturing, which is starting to be more and more in the industry, but that need to go from, you know, approval to production, once it starts, they really wanna go, and they wanna go lightning fast. And towns want to consider things, and, you know, we gotta figure out the right balance. And, you know, if you look back, Anilum started their process, broke ground in twenty-sixteen, they opened it in twenty-twenty, that took four years. If you told most biotech life science firms, it's gonna take four years, they would cringe. So we gotta figure something out about that. So, one of the reasons why they like as-of-right permitting, it eliminates uncertainty. Developers and private companies, they wanna clear, clean path, they get really nervous when they have to go to public hearings, because they can't predict what you're gonna do, you know, so they want, they like certainty. It's also a, as-of-right is kind of really a sign of business friendliness, we really want this use, and as we talked about, time is a key issue. Water and sewer infrastructure, I know I'm dominating the conversation now, but Tim will soon dominate.
And, you know, we'll, we'll circle back, but the bottom line is water and sewer are really critical to the life sciences, right? They need an abundant, high-quality supply of water for research and development, for manufacturing, and wastewater is one that really, I won't say it sneaks up on you, but it's one of the ones that people don't consider as early in the process, but it's something that is, it is extremely critical to have access to public infrastructure for wastewater. It is very, very difficult to, to manage wastewater from a facility, like a life sciences facility, either R and D, or manufacturing, or the combination of the two, through onsite wastewater, through what we would consider to be septic. It's very difficult to do, not impossible, but it's very difficult to do, and in some other overlay districts, like certain groundwater protection overlay districts, it may be prohibited entirely. So having access to wastewater, to a public sewer system is really important for this kind of overlay district.
And easy access to Cambridge, so your location on four ninety-five, not that far from twenty-four or ninety-five, is really propitious, you know, it's an hour to Boston, you know, not in the middle of rush hour, but for the most, can you stay? Uh-uh. And I also wanna bring out desirable locations for towns with amenities and services. This is really a critical issue, and it's not per se a zoning issue, but businesses in life sciences, and everywhere else, they're looking for talent, and finding workers who are, you know, the best and brightest, and who have STEM science, technology, and math backgrounds are really important. And not everyone has to be a PhD, they really want people who have VAs, and, you know, people who have lab experience, but that... But that desirable locations for talent. So, you know, one of the things is Norton, the industry is kind of growing from a very young hipster employee, even though that's still part of the profile mix. But not everyone, you know, as they mature and wants to live in Cambridge or on the Seaport, and they may be married, they may be starting to have kids. They're looking for places that they want to have those amenities and restaurants and, you know, quality of recreation spaces and easy commutes. But also that they want a place where they can raise a family. So as the industry grows, that's becoming increasingly important. So I think that's one of the appeals of Norton potentially because you you have that. And that's where thinking, some of these are non-zoning issues that as a community, if you really want to embrace life science, making sure you have strong education in science and math is really important, even on the high, you know, junior high and high school level. So some of the zoning constraints. So I just wanted to, based on my experience with developers and our interviews with life science folks, parking requirements is kind of a thing that pushes people's buttons. Not that people don't want parking, they do want parking. But they also want it kind of, what they think is, they perceive as reasonable. So sometimes and many towns, they view current zoning requirements as onerous. So in this example, you've got, you have on office space, one space per 200 square feet. And that's clinics and medical labs. So if you're talking about a clinic that deals with healthcare services, one space per 200 is a pretty reasonable standard. But if you're dealing with a clinical lab that is doing more on the research and not dealing with the general public, that may be a little high. And just as a point of reference, a 5,000 square foot office would require 25 spaces. So that's not quite an acre of land. Then you've got industrial manufacturing uses. You allow one space per 800 square feet. So for 10,000 square feet, that's 12 and a half parking spaces. Warehouses, you don't explicitly mention as life science, but you're at one space per 3,000 square feet. So you'd only need 3.3 spaces. But those are really important. So height requirements are also an issue because if you're looking at height in life science, they're usually talking about 15 foot floor to ceiling. They need a lot of room for ventilation systems. So sometimes that may be low, some, you know, but it's generally one, you know, one floor to 15. So what's interesting is some life science companies are using gravity as a way to flow and save on pumping costs, their, their supplies. So they might store on the top floor and then it use gravity to come down instead of having to pump it up. So you store on the third floor or your top floor and then you just can use a funnel or a tube or a pipe and it comes in and you can modulate it. Whereas if it's on the ground floor by the loading dock, you have to pump and that's more expensive. And one of the things, people really think through their systems. So they're looking at how to minimize electrical costs and minimize climate impacts, be very green. You know, people in life science facilities are really, that's very thought through. So that's just, you know, something to kind of think about in terms of height issues. And utilities, it's water and sanitary, but it's also electric. It's also telecommunications. These folks need refrigeration. You know, their products will be destroyed. Their research gets destroyed if they don't have constant temperatures that they can control. So that having redundancy is really critical, so.
Yeah, and I, I have a slide in the back that just, it really drives this point home, but utilities are critical, obviously, for for this, the success of this kind of district. Like Kathy mentioned, reliable electric. So it's not just access to electricity, but it's a reliable source of electricity, one that's not going to cut out, you know, every storm, you know, that has redundancy built into it, right? That's really critical for the, for what Kathy mentioned, you know. These facilities have, in some cases, 24/7 manufacturing that's going on. They have refrigerated storage, they have R and D that's happening all the time. And if they lose power, they can lose research, they can lose product line, they can lose a lot. So both electric and natural gas, for those that have, that use natural gas for heating and for emergency backup power generation. Having reliable gas available is really critical. You know, these are also really big, in some cases, really big spaces, right? These are big buildings that have a lot of building systems that require power and that require gas. So having both access to these utilities and having reliable utilities is really important. Telecommunications, these types of uses tend to be really, really significant data generators. They create a lot of data and they move a lot of data around, right? And so having reliable internet, fast and reliable internet is really important to them. It's almost as important as having electricity onsite because so much of what they do generates huge amounts of data. And so they really rely on the internet like we rely on water and power. So having those onsite or access to those in this district is going to be really important. And the last thing I'll say on water, and just to sum up the slide that I have a little bit further on, it's not just access to water and high quality water. It's also delivery of the water to the site and to the, to this district, right? There can be an ample amount of water in town, high quality water, but getting it to the district at high volumes is going to be really important. Because, you know, they may not all use a ton of water when they're doing their research or the manufacturing, but a lot of these facilities have very high fire flow requirements, right? They have, they need fire protection and that needs to be delivered to them at very high volume. So it's not just about having access to the water. It's about getting it there and getting a lot of it there for things like emergency fire. So that's, that's a little bit of additional criteria that we got to look at when we look at the water for this kind of overlay district.
Now, you're talking about water.
Yep.
What, when you say quality water, Norton has history in terms of water, in terms of brown water and things like that.
Yep. So a lot of these facilities will actually take the municipal supply and they will actually treat it onsite. No matter how, how high quality the water is, it's usually not high enough for a facility, for a bio, for a life sciences facility in their manufacturing or in their research and development. So they will actually have additional treatment that they'll do onsite, like reverse osmosis or other filtration that they'll do onsite. They want to start with a high quality water, right? Because everything that they have to take out of the water, right?
Costs money.
It costs money, it's additional power requirements, it just complicates their process. So generally, they can work with, we'll say potable water. If it's good enough for for us to drink, they can work with that. But the higher the quality, you know, we don't want to say, say the minimum standard, the better, the easier it is for them.
We're getting new wells and things are hopefully getting better, but there's a, anytime you mention water in Norton, it's a, it's a thing.
I got you.
I mean, and those would be selling points for Norton in that respect. And another selling point is your fire department. Your fire department learned a lot and hired a peer reviewer and worked with them on when, when Analem was permitted and had a very, you know, the company had a very positive experience. So having their perception and what they're telling people is this fire department knows what they're talking about.
All those companies talk to each other.
That, that's a real positive because there are chemicals used in life sciences and materials that, you know, fire departments need to be aware of, be specially trained, and Norton's in that process and is well regarded. So I think that's good news, but it's also, I bring it up because it's also a zoning concern because whenever you have a chemical, people are concerned. So there's ways for safe storage, but that's really important. So, next.
I have something to add. When we talked with Analem, they mentioned that there are some chemicals that they just simply cannot process onsite. It is not, we don't have that capacity to process it in this town or in that facility. So a lot of things have to be shipped out to other processing facilities elsewhere. So that the worst of the chemicals are not, not going to be local, they're going to be shipped out.
Okay.
So I just thought it might be helpful to look at, you know, let's, you know, get your feedback on how the zoning and permitting and the review of Analem. What, how you think it might, how it could be better, just because it's a good case example. You have a 205,000 square foot facility. It's three stories, it included manufacturing as well as cold warehousing that meets FDA standards. The target employment is 150 jobs per their agreement with the town. And the pandemic kind of, you know, dampened that, the ramp up curve because they opened right at the midst of the pandemic. But that's the goal and that's over three shifts. So the parking required per by law, if I was just going to do one space per 800 square feet, which is your industrial requiring, you would require 257 parking spaces. Their perception is that your parking requirements were kind of stiff when it came to their use. And when you look at the number of jobs and the number of spaces.
At 15 for visitors, but yeah.
Yeah, you need some visitor spaces, but yeah.
About 100, yeah.
And just kind of thinking through the spatial issues regarding the height for the three zones, your stories, you have, you're basically a three story town, though you do allow in the village commercial core area, four stories. And you can go up to 60 feet in the village commercial core, but everywhere else, it's either 45 or 50 feet. So that's always an issue because you're concerned about shadows and residential. So that's something we may want to explore. Do you have any other thoughts and, you know, recollections of how that process might have, could have been better from your perspective? Or what do you think went well or?
I will say that none of the members of the current board were here when this plan was approved. I think the only thing, I think I'm the longest tenured member of the board and the only thing that I saw from L9 was when they had to talk to us about the signage requirement. And they were here for, I think, half an hour to, to get approval on the sign, which I think was bigger than the bylaw allowed, but made complete sense for the building. So in terms of the actual facility itself, I, we weren't involved, unfortunately, to give that context.
Anyone else have any impressions or?
Well, not about that, but when you talked about backup plans, because Norton is also known for power outages and we've been hit with storms and stuff like that. Would that be something that they would be providing their own backup, backup plans with generators and natural gas use or is that something that?
That's a great question.
Needs to be addressed by?
So it's, it, that's a great question. So that's not something that's going to get addressed in the bylaw per se, right? Because you can't mandate the town bring in another feed from, you know, national grid or whatever source. But it's something that the town should be considering if they want to, if they want to make this bylaw successful. Hearing what, what it's going to take to make this overlay district successful, which is access to these utilities and redundancy in the utilities. It's something the town could be thinking about on a separate track, all right? How do we make these things, these other things happen that are not in the bylaw? How do we, how do we improve water quality in town? How do we improve access to sewer? How do we improve?
Would that be taking a look at previous outages with an overlay of the zoning of where?
It could be.
Power is and seeing how consistent that.
Yeah, if there's data available, that would be great. You know, you do have.
Say again. I'm lucky, I never get it.
Analem's relying on Taunton Municipal Light and Power as their backup. And that, that was a, I think you're served by grit, National Grid. That was National Grid's recommendation. So I was surprised because TMLP usually stays within its boundaries. But, you know, National Grid's the service provider, but they recommended having TMLP as the backup because they didn't have, it appears that they didn't have another substation to have sufficient backup. So they wanted to be the primary customer. But, you know, really need, you know, that's something you might want to think about having discussions with, you know, your state elected officials on having the town manager. You know, National Grid, you got to up your game here.
Okay.
I'd like also to point out that they did have that system that was a seamless train station. So the moment National Grid was starting to like chug along, they wouldn't even feel it. It would just change to Taunton Electric. And also if we were to places closer to the Mansfield border too. I know Mansfield and Taunton have one of the cheapest electricity rates in Massachusetts. It would be great if we could have it in town, but we currently don't. But those are selling things we can think about when doing placement. If we don't have it now, maybe we can tap to another town. They would certainly appreciate their revenue. I'm sure they work something out with them.
So that's, yeah, that's a great point. So that's a consideration when we actually visit, figure out where the boundaries of this overlay district are going to be. That's some of what I'm going to be working on, what are the constraints, right? Where is the water available? Where is the sewer available? Where's the power available? And, you know, is it putting it near Taunton? Is it putting it near Mansfield so we can, we can use it as a backup supply? Those are the kinds of things that we would consider when actually citing this. But then figuring out how to make that consistently available in the future, you know, that's, that's the next step.
Right.
And I did see a public person, a number of the public raising their hand. We'll let them get through the rest of their presentation and then we'll open up for questions.
This is essentially summary of everything I've said so far about the utilities. And the one thing I'll add is all of the life science industry, it's not a monolith. They don't all have exactly the same demands when it comes to utilities. But in, in broad strokes, in, in general terms, they are very high consumers of utility infrastructure.
And, and there's lots of different sizes of life science firms, you know, and their support services. There's technical labs, there's warehousing that specializes in life science because it's cold storage. There, you know, you know, there are certain types of transporters that, you know, have coal, have reliable cold transport. So there's lots of different kinds of companies, you know. And as I mentioned, there's contract manufacturing. What's interesting is Mass Bio, which used to just focus on that Cambridge and a little bit of Boston, that was like the sweet spot and that was the bullseye. They're really talking about developing micro clusters throughout the Commonwealth and, you know, up beyond Cambridge and Boston. And, you know, the fact that Mansfield has a life science incubator, I think bodes well for this, you know, part of southeastern Mass. And you also have access, you know, Fall River also is doing some life science manufacturing. And you also have access to the Providence market with Brown grads. So you're in a good location for that, that type of thing.
So if you go to the next slide, so this is just, this is an example of how utilities are going to factor into sort of the location of this, right? So here is a map of the town's groundwater protection overlay district. And that's the purple, sort of violet hatch that takes up kind of the eastern part of town. If the overlay district gets cited in that hatched area, we're going to want to make sure that that, that the district definitely has access to wastewater. Because again, industrial discharges, which is what these would be from these facilities, are not compatible with an overlay district like this, with a water protection overlay district like this. So we're definitely going to make sure that, that we have access to sewer. That's something that we're definitely going to look at as part of this. So you can see as we go through the process here, we're going to start to overlay all these different uses, all these different constraints in town to try to hone in on the, on the best location for an overlay district.
And just because you may not have sanitary sewer today, that doesn't mean it can't be tomorrow or that tomorrow may be, you know, it takes some time to design and build. But it's like identifying those areas so that you can grow and that you're building, building that capacity.
I know our water and sewer commission is. I know our Water and Sewer Commission is comp with where we want to go with sewer, so, and I'm sure you'll talk with them as you go through this process, so.
But they're more than open to, if developers want to pay to extend sewer, which is obviously very expensive, they're more than welcome to in the town, it's very supportive, that's their best-case scenario. So even if it's not in their like 10 or 20-year plan, if, if they're really, you know, willing and able, that's something, that's how we.
Right, but every life sci, life science companies, particularly relatively new ones, you know, they have been wandering in the desert with research money, and sometimes it takes them 10 years to do the research before they have a product. So then they want to go, liquidly split, and so they don't always want to wait to bring a sewer line, you know, especially if it's not in a plan, not, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's one thing to run it 1,000 feet, it's a whole nother thing to have to.
Yeah.
Build new connections and, you know.
You said earlier with their timeline, the four years would make them cringe, right? What, what's their timeline that they're looking to do stuff in?
If they, people are now.
If we come in, and the zoning's all correct, the overlay, all the bylaws are in place, what are they looking for for their timeline?
They would, I would say they're probably going realistically be two years because they want to build, you got to design, permit, and construct.
So much improvement, yeah.
And two years would be an ideal scenario.
So, you know, the part of this.
They might say yesterday, you know, but, but realistically.
You know, so we're going to, we're going to craft a, an overlay district and a zoning ordinance that fits as best we can with what Norton has available today, right? With the understanding that there's some wishless things here, like, for example, on the sewer, you're right, if we want this overlay district to be really successful and really attractive, it would be better to have the sewer there already, you know, before these uses come. Some of them may, may decide, yes, we're going to pay to extend sewer to this area, but you might get, that might be one that agrees to it, and you might have nine that say, we're not interested, and we're going to move on to someplace where sewer's already available, right? So, you know, we'll craft the ordinance as best we can with what's available now, but like I said, we'll identify as part of this recommendations for things to make it, you know, things that we think will make it more successful, like potentially extending sewer, potentially, you know, power, stuff like that, you know, we're going to.
And then in the future, you can amend your overlay district map to include broader area.
Yep.
But start with what's real and not aspirational, and then as you, you know, and let's state what the aspirations are and the recommendations, and as you, you know, achieve those, you can amend your map.
And the last slide here, I think this is the last slide, is just, again, to talk more about sewer. This is a sewer map, this is a little bit older, I think it's from 2015, but the purple areas are the sewered areas, and the blue areas are the needs areas. So, you know, this is where sewer.
Some of that is done now.
Yeah, some of this, exactly, some of the needs areas have been done. So this is generally where sewer infrastructure is or will likely be in the future. So again, this will be something, we overlay your current zoning, we overlay some of these other constraints to identify what, what an appropriate area in town would be for this overlay district.
And then we'll go on and talk.
Take off where they have to do stuff, take off what they have to do and things.
Yep.
And then we'll go on and talk about dimensional requirements and how, and look at how does that impact what's there, if it's an existing industrial use, what impacts would it have on nearby uses, and that's really a discussion, because you're the Norton experts.
So if we did, so if the town was proactive with the sewer connections, right, is that something we can recoup later on down the line with each company that comes in? Or say, listen, you're coming in, you're going to now be expected to expand the sewer even further so that we increase that overlay zone?
That's a good question, so.
Or is it just less of a tip that they asked for afterwards?
I was going to say, so.
Be attached to the tip?
Yeah.
Or play that whole.
Right.
You could bring the sewer, what, the way we've seen it done in other, in other places, they, you know, they identify the zone, right? This is where we want it. This is the infrastructure that's in the ground right now in terms of roads, we're going to run sewer down every street, right? So it's there, it's at the parcel line waiting for the developer, right? That's one extreme. We've also seen them where they run it to the, to the zone, to the park, whatever it might be, not in it, not to all this, all the parcels in it, but they run it to that. So then, then it becomes incumbent upon the developer to run it that last stretch, right? It's a much smaller piece for them to pick up, and it's more targeted, they can pick, pick it up and take it exactly where they want it. It's not exactly at the property line, you know, where the town put it, you know, sometimes they got to move it anyway. So this is an opportunity for them to kind of take it where they need it, it's a much smaller piece that they have to extend. So we've seen them do it that way as well, you know, run it basically to the area, but not all the way into the, into the park.
And in the case of the latter example, if you had outsized project like an Ellen Island, you know, that one, it was to the area, but not, you know, it needed to go a little farther, maybe even needed a pump station, that would be a really good Mass Works grant. So, you, and, and also the Life Science Center also provides some grant money occasionally on sewers. So, there, there are some state resources that could come to bear, and I don't want to, you know, you can't, I can't promise them, I also think it's, you know, communities that invest in themselves, usually, you know, you can invest some of Norton money, that can kind of help attract Mass Works money and life science money and do a blend. So that, that, that's a way to kind of do that. There's also, you know, if it's going to be a high-tax new construction project, there's also something called district improvement financing, so you could use the advanced tax revenues in part to help offset, you know, sanitary sewer construction costs and debt. So there, there's some tools, but. So really, that's kind of our overview, and we want to, as I said at the beginning, we want to be able to kind of bring, you know, kind of let you know what we're doing, and get, you know, so that you can start thinking about it in the back of your head, and also answer any questions or, you know, hear any comments and have any discussion.
So you said at the beginning, what is the timeline for the?
Well, technically, the grant, it goes through a, a year from June, but I think realistically, we're probably talking about trying to do it in 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, and we also know that, you know, consultation, so that you have public hearings, that's a process, so that may happen, you know, beyond it, you know, we don't have a big budget, you know, but we want to be as responsive as we can.
I was looking for back in the napkin ballpark, and that makes sense.
Okay. So any other questions or comments?
I'm trying to, members of the board here, if they have any questions, comments?
Yeah, so this is my question, what is the most valuable, I guess, thing that these companies are looking for? Is it specifically the manufacturing? Is it the research? Is it, is it the offices? Is it all of the above? Is, is there one area in particular that they're, they're really looking for, some places to develop?
Research for the most part is really still centralized in Cambridge and, and Boston Seaport. Some of that's moving out to, from Kendall Square to kind of the L-Wife area, you see some research going on in Lexington, but for the, and starting a little bit on 128, but that, you know, that's really only been because the rents have gotten, there's limited space in Kendall Square, and rents are over $100 a square foot. So, the, the cost benefit starts to make $70 space look cheap, you know, that's not, you know, I don't think you go do R and D, that doesn't mean that a manufacturing facility won't have some R and D components to it, because I think you're going to start to see, if I'm looking at 10, 15 years out, some morphing of manufacturing and research and development, especially with customized medicine, which is really, we're on the precipice, especially since biotech, it's been very much cellular and molecular historically, but now we're really doing more RNA, DNA, the new vaccines are RNA, DNA-based, and with that change in kind of technology focus, and that's not to say that we're not, some companies aren't still in the molecular cellular, it's kind of like, there, there's a, you know, more, more different types of biotechnology and life sciences than there were before. So I would say you're probably more in the manufacturing, assembly, supportive services, you could do supportive lab work, because you could, once there's a dense, some density, a contract tech, high-quality contract lab could then serve multiple customers.
Still, heavy R and D and bigwigs in Cambridge, back office at 95 and manufacturing at 495, basically is the.
I think that realistically, I think that's.
Why there's a whole bunch of office parks in Quincy, and why there's a whole bunch of, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I think I'll, I'll now mention was that if they could have a full, fully equipped lab closer, it would be a blessing for them. I think they mentioned they have to drive fully into Boston cameras for some of the stuff, and it's a long drive, takes a lot of their time, so if they could have that in this, like in the suburbs, that would be a significant improvement for them. I don't know how much other towns permit for the accessory life sciences uses, so if we could get ahead on that curve, I think that would be really beneficial.
And that's where kind of being proactive, what, you know, you know, this is the planning and land use part, but there's also the economic development, and economic development involves introducing companies, introducing people to Norton, and thinking about contract labs as a, a target opportunity. And, you know, there, it, there are several life science companies in this, you know, core area now, so that, it makes it more, more likely.
They like to cluster.
And even if it's not likely today, you know, talking to people, you start the relationship, so when they, when they start expanding, they go, oh, we've heard of that place, we'll call them, we're thinking about that area. So it's a, some of this is planting seeds, and the land use is kind of, you know, preparing the soil and the garden.
I know we had one person on the Zoom meeting who had raised their hand, I'm not sure if they still wanted to make a comment. If anybody else would like to make a comment, I'd ask the use cop to the podium, ask him questions he might have. And for now, I'll ramble for a couple of seconds and see if anybody wants to come forward.
Hi, Joe Cogley, Alamo 22A Road. Is this slideshow available on the Norton website?
We gave it to Maria, so you can distribute it however you want.
I can upload it or send it to you via email, whatever you prefer.
Sure. Email reply.
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
And second question is, life science overlay district that you're talking about, would that involve uses that deal with biological agents that if they were released could be a problem?
Well, there's different types of labs, so, so that might be a type of use, you might not want a level four lab, because that's more a highly contagious type of biological, but, you know, general cells are not highly, they're not hazardous per se, so it depends upon where you are on the spectrum.
Well, it might not just be, you know, Ebola or something, but it might be just chemicals that are used that if they end up in the water supply could be an issue, like copper is bad for water, right? Right? So, so I'm just saying, that would be something.
Well, that's.
Because we're talking about as-of-right development, I think, you were saying that that was one of the attractions, well, then you get to bring your bag of tricks with you.
Well, right, and that's why we, you know, I said that one things we have to think about is what is the protection on chemicals, so that's a.
I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm saying I don't know, and I don't need to learn.
So that's one of the things we're going to have to weigh out, because as Tim was saying, it's, you know, water protection areas, maybe that's certain types of life sciences, you know, like medical devices may not require that type of thing.
Right, well, thank you.
So no, you're, you're, you know, you're raising good questions, and I think that's all part of the discussion.
Thank you. And on the Zoom meeting, I know we, some, you came off mute for a second and then you, you stopped, so if you want to just state your name and address for the record again, please, sir? Dan, is that you that wanted to, yep?
Yep, do you mean me?
Yes, that's, I saw you come off mute, so I assumed you wanted to say something.
Okay, I'm finding it a little hard to hear, but I think you mean me, but I think my questions haven't asked, one would have been the potential disaster that, like a Norfolk Southern thing, which could happen, but I think that was just asked. The other thing is, I think it was also answered, I, I apologize, I was, my attention was turned for some time, and I believe someone said that you were planning on putting this on the Mansfield border, should there be, or at least that was the plan, should there be such a construction in town.
So, there's, there's not any, there's.
Certainly, we wouldn't want something like this, the building that I saw on the other slide, right in the, as they call it, Village Center.
Right. There's no place where this overlay district is cited now. The team is, it was just noted that Mansfield has, Mansfield be, would it be a potential to provide a backup power supply, much as Taunton can? So there's no decisions of any kind as to where the overlay district would be at this point.
Okay.
And also, the Village Center is not where you've really indicated that you, you want to have as-of-right zoning for life sciences at this time.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're starting out, and there's a lot of factors, so we've mentioned possibilities, but there's, there is no, there is nothing written or thought through saying, oh, that's the place, because that's, that's what we're going to be working on, and so we're, we're all ears in terms of where you want or don't want it, so.
Okay. And in terms of next steps in the process, is that going through the zoning map and checking off yes, no, and then bringing it back to us?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for inviting us.
Just have one more question if you don't mind.
So thank you for your time, and I know sometimes for myself, I always think of the question on my drive home, or in the shower the next day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have one more question if you don't mind, yeah. Typically, what types of jobs would these life sciences companies bring? Obviously, I know that there's, you know, you mentioned people coming from Brown, and there was a mention of potentially collaboration with Wheaton, you know, would, would these wanting to be actual manufacturing facilities? Will a lot of these jobs just be manufacturing jobs that require, you know, little skill? Or will a lot of these jobs be very kind of high-level jobs that require, you know, advanced degrees? Is there a broad spectrum? What, what is the typical type of jobs that, you know, these companies would bring?
It's going to vary from life science company to life science, but there's usually a range of jobs. So you're, you're going to have some people in a manufacturing facility for life science who will need probably some advanced degrees, you know, particularly in quality control. Then you're going to have some people who may be more, you know, what we would call bench and, you know, processing. Manufacturing is not our grandparents' manufacturing anymore, it's really not, you know, robot, you know, it's not assembly line, just putting things together. A lot of life science manufacturing is fairly advanced, it requires some, you know, STEM, science, technical, and math background, so, you know, having an associate's degree is usually kind of often a minimal, or someone who's very adept at computers and robotics, because there's a lot of robotics involved in life science manufacturing. So yes, people are part of it, there are jobs, but there's also, there is a range in terms of, we're not. of, we're not just talking about PhDs, we're talking, you know, we're talking about people who, you know, you know, might have excelled in science and math, and maybe they just got an associate's, or maybe they're supervises, you know, on some part of lab work or some part of, you know, robotics and computers, and then you're going to have people who have bachelor's degrees as well.
Okay, thank you.
But it will vary company to company.
Right, right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have anything else, though?
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that does conclude our agenda for the evening. Does anyone else have anything else that they wanted to discuss in the, in the open session?
Please, commotion, do your turn.
Motion in a second. Jim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much, everybody, for the evening. And don't.